Six, six thirty. Our chairman is delayed, he will be coming. I apologize for my voice, but I'm attacking my vocal cords. As always, this meeting is being recorded and shown on TV live, so everybody be aware as when you're exchanging your opinions. Is anyone here for open session?
I am.
Oh, late.
I called and waited for Dan.
Oh, alright. Ben?
Well, as, as you may know, and maybe some people don't, we have accepted the final report draft, the final draft from John Hume of the MRPC for the economic development piece of the master plan. And that looks fine, and that's all well and good. But it occurred to me after reading the report, listening to his presentations, and talking with everybody in town, that we're, we're in a situation where hubbyston runs on families, is what I like to say. Because the, the emphasis of the report is on small businesses. So what I'd like to present tonight is the, the opportunity for us to list on our website, a special page that would list all the small businesses or large businesses in the town as a reference guide, not an advertisement, but as a reference guide. I think Ed, when you were with the Hubbardson Business Association, you produced such a guide as well.
You had a directory, yeah.
Yeah, a directory, that's a good word. And we could put that on the website, and everybody who would like to participate simply could send in a, a notation of what their business is, where it's located, and residents in town would be encouraged therefore to do business with other members of the town, other neighbors, so.
Sounds good.
That's all I had, I'd like to have that idea thought about, and incorporated into the website.
Okay.
Sure.
Does this require any kind of a motion for this, or is?
It would be up to you, I think it's just a procedural thing, quite frankly, but, you know.
I don't think it requires a vote.
Yeah.
So when we do the redesign of the website, there is a particular section, we're calling Economic Development, trying to tie in the planning board. The planning board's work on the master plan and the draft, plus what we're gonna be signing later tonight, hopefully, which is the IMA for the Economic Development Coordinator position. So all of it ties in nicely, and I, I think there can be a section, and should be a section for existing.
No, I think it's a great idea.
But I don't think we need a vote.
Alright.
Just, just one caution, I think that privacy of information is something you might wanna check on as to whether they would have to, is he saying that they'd have to submit it, so that they would have to approve what they're going on the website?
Make it voluntary, in other words, Ed, on their part, is that what you're saying?
Well, it's.
I, I would check with all applicable laws, I think it's public information if you're a business in town. But we'll make sure that, that people's privacy is respected. The idea is to help, not to hurt, so.
Right, I understand that, but today, it's, it's, when you put it out on the internet, do they have the right to say they like their business name on the internet? Probably, most of them would, but, anyways.
It's a fair question.
Okay. Um, anyone else for open session?
So I'm Debbie Reed from Streeter Road. I got my warrant. There's something missing.
The twenty thousand from the?
Yeah.
We pulled it, because we're, we're gonna wait and see what the article does, and then we'll address it in the fall. That was our decision.
So the vote that we went through meant nothing at all?
No, we just think it's a little premature right now to, to put it on there.
And so no discussion with the group of Streeter Road? Just decided that after you took a vote? So silly me, I thought the vote actually meant something.
Well, we, we figured that, the way the article is written, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, if the article passes, it may not stand up anyways. So if the article passed and it didn't stand up, then, and then if the twenty thousand passed, then we're trying to do it the right way, rather than putting the cart before the horse. That's, that's our whole point.
And so it, if it passes, it's no good?
Well, it's, it's not no good, it's, so council looked at the, looked at the petition that was drawn up. So the idea behind accepting a public way, if, if I'm understanding council correctly, is a, a road needs to be laid out, so that, and, and the legal needs to be completed in order for that road to be accepted as a public way. So to motion for it to be accepted as a public way before going through those is, is on legally gray area.
So none of you thought it was a good idea to let any of us know?
Well, we went over it that night, we didn't, we had to make our decision that night based on the printing of the warrant and accepting the warrant.
That night was two weeks ago?
Yes.
But I, we met with you March twenty sixth. So clearly you had time to contact us after speaking to town council and letting us know where we stood?
So the, what, what council commented on was the citizens' petition. So the article to use, to use free cash was brought up at a finance committee meeting. The finance committee meeting didn't like the open-endedness of, and I don't wanna speak for the finance committee either, but didn't, wanted to know more about what the actual cost would be in the, in the process for accepting, and whether or not the citizen petition would move through. So they weren't going to recommend the article at that point in their meeting. That information was brought during the warrant review, so there wasn't a specific agenda item to discuss Streeter Road, it was to discuss the entirety of the warrant. Which we did our best to publicize, but in, I don't know how to say it without sounding, you'd have to invite the whole town, 'cause the warrant touches everybody. So it wasn't exclusionary, it was more, um, wasn't sure where the conversation was gonna go in terms of the warrant articles.
Ben?
What article was pulled?
The want to fund the legal.
Funding?
The funding, to fund the legal and the road layout, the survey work, from ZOCC.
Not the initiative?
Not the initiative, because that's a citizen petition.
Right.
So we discussed it, and we said if the petition does pass, we will bring back that article in the fall. That's how we left it.
I, I have the copy that Copman and Page wrote about layout and acceptance. And there is a distinction, and, and they point out that, uh, the layout and acceptance is not the same, I'm sorry, the layout and the, uh, let me read it to you rather than say it. Acceptance is the procedure whereby the local legislative body in towns, the town meeting, votes to recognize and accept responsibility for the street layout adopted by the selectmen or road commissioners, also known as planning board mistow. Acceptance of a town way should not be confused with the acquisition of the land underlying the way. Acquisition and acceptance are two separate actions, different, different procedures as discussed below. So if, if you're gonna bring it back after it's accepted at this town meeting, that, that could be done. Right.
That's basically what we, what we decided to do at the moment.
So the fact that they felt that it was an open-ended finance, we, we have a direct quote from town council, as well as a direct quote from the surveyor, which came up to fourteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, but I think there was other things in there that weren't, weren't figured in. The, the setting of the bounds, and any other thing that came up.
That was what the surveyor would do, setting the bounds, yep.
Yeah, but that was, there was additional fees on top of that.
That's where the twenty came from.
That's why we added the, the extra.
That's what we discussed, we, we did discuss that at the last meeting. And we said if this does pass, we'd like to see a, a more firm number. Than having it fourteen thousand, then we figured twenty, what if it's thirty, you know? So maybe we could have a more definitive number if it does pass for the, for the fall meeting.
So I guess my other part is, I guess I don't understand how you can go through all this work. We came to you guys, you guys talked about it, you make a vote, and then, oh, next thing you know, vote doesn't really mean anything, and we changed our minds.
Well, your vote still means something. If, if your petition passes.
Your vote, your vote didn't mean anything, that's where I'm going.
Exactly, we, we, I just told you, if it does pass, we will bring this back to the fall meeting. So it's not like.
Without having to go through the whole process of coming before you and petitioning you and doing all that we did to get that?
You, you ju, you did the petition.
We have to do that all over again.
So if that does pass, we all agreed at that meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, that we will bring it back in the fall.
Without us coming to you again, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I don't think you'd have to come to us again, 'cause the town had voted to, to agree to it.
It was.
So let's, we probably would need some more definitive numbers from you. But other than that, it still is, it's still there.
Okay.
Okay?
Would've been nice to have been told.
Tom?
If I understood that conversation correctly, the reason it was pulled is because you didn't know the real cost, you only knew an estimated cost?
There was some, there was some cost in there, but there was still some unknowns in there.
Well, they were estimated costs, they weren't identified.
Exactly, exactly.
You'll never know the actual cost until you spend the money. And so another way of doing this would be to leave the article in there. And if it passed, then it proved to be an adequate amount of money, you could go for the additional five or ten thousand dollars in the fall.
That's a way to do it. I, I personally, I would, as a town resident, I would like to know a value before we start rolling the ball down the hallway, and it just keeps going and going and going.
So that means like when you wanna paint the churches for seventy-six thousand two hundred dollars, that's exactly what that bill's gonna be?
For the CPA, yes.
No, for the painting job.
Yeah, but that's through CPA funds.
And there'll be no extra money spent?
Not from the town.
And then, um, what if this motion that's, the article that's presently on the town warrant doesn't pass? What do the options, what options are available to the Streeter people?
They could bring it back. They could bring it back by citizen petition, couldn't they?
Depends.
Depends on what? A citizen petition has to be on the, on the warrant.
We might be getting ahead of ourselves, later on in this agenda, there is a discussion of the proposed bylaw changes. And, um, Deb, you ought to know
I'm sorry.
that in the proposed bylaw changes, they seem to be, uh, removing the rights of citizens to petition the town for acceptance of a road.
I saw that.
So if that passes, what are their options in the fall? You don't know, you made this article, so you're gonna be able to tell us.
If we're gonna remain private, if we remain private.
So there would be no other options?
So it does close the door on citizens to petition their town to have their road accepted.
And that was brought forth by the planning board, right?
No, it wasn't.
That was the.
Absolutely not.
By law review committee?
Yeah.
So what are the citizens' rights under that condition, under that scenario?
We'll have to see if it passes, I guess if it passes, then they, they won't have an option.
Well, not only will not Streeter have an option, but no citizen in the town will have that option. You have removed the right, that's both at the federal level, the state level, and the local level, to petition your government
The, the bylaw review committee came up with these, Tom, not us.
Pardon me?
You're talking like we came up with these, the bylaw review committee came up with these changes.
Well, when the bylaw review committee set out on their mission, I remember it being a discussion of numbering, spelling, grammar, and a general straightening out of some, some wording. This proposal on page twenty-nine of the article wipes out, notwithstanding the above, the town meeting may accept a private way, a way that does not meet all of the conditions set forth above upon a recommendation by majority vote from the planning board to waive such amendment, uh, to waive such conditions. That wipes that out. And forever in this town, no one will be able to petition the town.
Well, that's, that's up.
Let me finish my sentence. No one will be able to petition the town for acceptance of a road that doesn't meet the criteria stated above.
That's if the town voters vote that way.
Exactly.
It's up to the town vote.
Well, my point is, it's significantly different than a spelling correction. It's significantly different than a numbering correction. It did not come from the committee. The article, the note on the side says, "The DPW director, uh, made this request." So you people had to have seen it.
I remember seeing it, yes. But if people feel like you feel about it, it obviously isn't gonna pass.
Well, my point is, it's not.
Do people understand what they're reading, and that what they're, what they're, what they're losing?
It's not spelling and, and numbering. This is an issue of substance. And I don't believe it belongs in this revision of the general bylaws. It should be struck, it should not have been accepted by you folks.
You're up.
You're the chairman.
Ben?
I, I just wanna point out that, um, I was the one that procured those estimates from ZOCC and from legal. And I did so because at the planning board meeting, when we voted to waive the requirements, I mentioned that that was the proper way to do it, with the layout and the, the legal requirements that we needed. And we brought that to the select board, and I'm, I'm fairly confident that you guys all agreed with us. And we also pointed out that ZOCC's price on that survey, although we had a couple of caveats with maybe a need or a bound that may be needed to be put in place, or a boundary that may be put in place, was anywhere from six to seven thousand dollars cheaper than the next price that we got. And the legal bill was the legal bill, I mean, they're, they're being, were being serviced by Copman and Page, and they were, I thought, fair with what they said. So, I don't know, I'm, I'm very, I'm very disappointed, because I, I've heard several times at this meeting the commitment that you guys gave to the Streeter Road's, uh, residents, as the planning board did, for acceptance of their, their way as a town public way. And I think that one goes in hand with the other. And as far as I can see, in this economy, nothing's gonna get any cheaper. We wait until we get more prices down the road, it's just gonna cost more. So I think we're, I think we're shortchanging Streeter Road, and I think we're shortchanging the community. When we make a commitment, I feel we should stick with it. I wish there was some way you could put that back onto the warrant, maybe you could vote to do that again tonight, and let the people decide whether they wanna spend that money. Cap it at twenty grand, and go from there, which I think is more than sufficient. But that's my decision.
Sorry, sorry I'm late, everyone.
See, just a, just a quick question.
Jeff from Tom.
Maybe Ryan could call the, uh, town attorney and see if they could, uh, if there could be a change on the town meeting floor to include that money in the, in a, in a change on that article. Would that be too substantial a change? Maybe, that's a question to legal question.
It's a legal question.
Yeah, I, I would know.
'Cause so if, if one of the residents decides to add that money back in, pay for that, would that be an acceptable change to the article? Might as well be prepared, because I would assume.
It's a separate article.
No, not as a separate article, it's part of that article.
Could, could you add it to that article?
'Cause it's already been pulled, right?
No, no, it, 'cause the citizen petition is one thing.
But they can change it on the town meeting floor. You can change whatever, any article, entirely.
I guess we can find out.
Yeah, it's my understanding we can't change the citizen petition prior to town meeting, I'm not asking if it can be changed.
Those are the ones you wanna change petition, you know, you wanna, you wanna add an extra, because you don't want the petition to die because of funding. Petition stands on its own, and the funding should stand on its own also. Well, if the, if the petition passes, the way is accepted. It may not have the legal layout and the survey, but it's accepted. So you don't wanna have one go down because of the other. Money is a different, a different function than the petition. Yeah, I mean.
So what was the reasoning for dropping it, besides saying we'll bring it back in the fall?
Just because there was some unknowns, that I thought that this wasn't gonna be capped at twenty. Let's, let's make sure this is gonna be twenty, make sure it's not gonna be thirty or forty. That's, that's the only reason.
So again, it's another case of, you get an estimate and a quote from somebody, and gee, you can double that? I, I wouldn't accept a quote like that. I mean, that's not how I do business.
Well, that, that, again, let me just add to this, you know, that there, there, um, was a, uh, again, we felt like there's a chicken and egg situation going on here, okay?
I guess. I was gonna say that.
Oh, man, country hen.
Answer that question.
But, but anyway, so, so there was some, I remember it being brought up, that we didn't have any idea how many stone bounds were gonna be required, whether that's two per property, or, or what that was gonna be, and I forget how much extra it was per, five hundred bucks?
Yeah, it was so much to set each.
So much to set each bound, there'd be additional ones, and there's a number of properties, sometimes you need two, sometimes it could be.
One will cover two, you know?
Or there's one behind as well, and so you start doing the math, and we, we were just doing the math as we're sitting here talking, going, okay, if it's five hundred dollars times ten, or, or wait, thirty, is it, is it fifteen grand? You know, so we just, it got to a point where we just didn't have that comfort level, that we, we, we were, had a responsible amount of money that we felt good about. So that, I'm just, we had, there's nothing to do with squashing this by any means, it was, it was, uh, thanks, Tom. It wa, it was, it was, um, it was strictly that, what I just said. I mean, we, we've been honest with you for however long you've been coming here, a year or more, and I'm telling you that now. This is not like a change in, uh, feeling of the overall concept. It was the unknowns that some board members brought to the table, as part of the discussion, as we do with everything else, and it just got to where it got to, so.
So do you think that my confidence would be a little bit higher in what you're telling me now, had you not contacted me and said, hey, look, there was a conversation, the article's not gonna be on the warrant when you get it in the mail on Saturday? And that maybe I would feel a little bit more confident, and the fact that you're telling me you really are behind us, when I kinda feel like, oop, took a little bit of a rub, pulled out from underneath my feet.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I could just apologize for that, I guess, it's, it's, and I, I unfortunately, uh, you know.
So the big thing was me feeling as a citizen
Sure.
that I've, I've done all the things that I thought I was supposed to do, come before the board, get this vote happening, and then, oh, it's gonna be on the article, it's gonna be on the warrant, and then I get my warrant and it's not there. So how does that build confidence in our board? That you guys vote on something, and then, oop, it just doesn't show up? Get where I'm going?
Get what you're going.
Okay, my point made, that's all I'm saying.
And, 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 okay, understood, and just further, we had another member of the, the situation come in open session, I think that was last meeting, right?
It was.
And we, I couldn't, I, I can't think of how more supportive we would've been towards Streeter Road and this process that's going on than we were at that meeting. So I, I apologize, you know, 'cause I, I can understand your frustration with what you just said there. But as far as an overall concept and overall everything else, all I can say is, that's never changed.
Well, then I thank you for that, 'cause I know exactly what you're talking about, and I, I hope I gave you enough ammunition to.
We pulled it up on the phone, did you watch it?
I didn't get to.
Okay.
They're, she's actually coming back in.
I think so, but I, I, maybe, we'll see.
But Ed, doesn't know if she can.
No, at a future meeting.
No.
She doesn't know if she can.
No. Ed? Oh, sorry.
Well, now that the article was restored, and it would say, uh, amount not to exceed twenty thousand, and if it was greater than twenty thousand, would be borne by the, uh,
Residents.
by the residents of the, uh, street.
It's a good idea.
It's a great idea.
Wish you were there at the time.
I just counted, it's roughly thirty-two bounds, um, yeah, thirty-two bounds, times five hundred is sixteen thousand.
And I, I, I'm trying to remember if it's five hundred or not. I know it was a number that was significant enough that if you multiply it by a, a, a several dozen, that it was gonna really just blow it out of there, and I think you were doing this math too, and we just.
Can't they put pins in temporarily, and still get the job done?
I, I have no idea, I, I, I.
And then put bounds in whenever?
I don't know the regulations.
I don't know.
Yeah, pins are cheaper, yeah, you can put pins in.
You don't have to have a stone bound.
Maybe, okay, you know.
Drill a hole in a rock, or put a pin in?
Yeah.
Or might already even be there still.
Well, and some of them are, because they're recent.
But worst case scenario.
I mean, if they're in somebody's backyard, nobody needs a stone in their backyard.
No, just the front edge.
Yeah, just the front.
Right.
And then, there's the issue at the other end, is it gonna be a land taking involved? No, and the lady at the end.
She doesn't own any of the road, period, none. Her deed does not give her any rights to the road. Lovewell Pond Association owns that whole section of the road.
Didn't she say her pins were in the road?
She couldn't have been more emphatically against that, so anyway, I'm just telling you, go watch what we, we.
I know, I, I will, and I thank you.
So, I, I, it, it's hard to sit here and have the complete opposite thing told you by two different people on two different weeks, but you can, I think you're.
You've said that about the survey too, is that these are the questions that need to be answered by the survey.
Yeah.
Sure, but I, I.
Because the legal challenges that could come from it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But.
It's been an ongoing issue at the end of the road.
Yeah, on the SS's map, it, it shows a different, I think it just shows it right away. It, it changes, you know? When it gets towards the end.
Yeah, because, because I had, I have the deed, Lovewell Pond owns that whole section of the road.
Yeah, no, I, I called it up and Michael read the letter, uh,
Yeah.
to her, which said the exact opposite, and she was like, oh.
She didn't stop on what she said. Yeah. Thank you.
So, all right, I'm sorry about that, you know, about the notification piece of it, but it wasn't just 'cause.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know where we're at with things.
Well, it's just all open session, anything else on open session? Okay, then we'll move to the first thing, item, the Country Hen Scholarship Award presentation.
Yay!
Wow. This is the third time that I've got to do this in the last three years.
And who are you, sir?
I am Bob Borger, I'm the gentleman who works at Country Hen, I think you all know me, right?
We're on TV.
Oh, oh, that. Anyway, we're here to congratulate Gia for this. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Just, just a little thing here, that, that I do.
It's all about you, right?
It's not about me.
Lots of chickens.
An egg symbolizes the future. Good luck and prosperity. Our hope is that the Country Hen Scholarship helps to start Gia on a journey toward the future filled with success and prosperity. Gia, we see great promise in the accomplishments you have achieved, as indicated by your advanced coursework at Mass Academy of Math Science, as well as your many academic awards and honors. Your work with special needs students shows your commitment to working hard to help others grow. This is one of many qua qualities of a very good egg. I wanted to be a small part of your first steps to the future, and look forward to your service and contributions along the way. Congratulations. There you go. Here's a little remembrance about the Country Hen, and congratulations. Your check will come from the school.
Congratulations?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Can we get a picture? Congratulations.
Sure. We need a picture, right?
Yes, we do, to take a picture. Right over there, sorry. You gonna step in too?
How's this?
Oh, that's great.
I'm sorry, I've been in the wrong's way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys, now you can go back to the big business.
Next to this. Hey.
Thanks, folks.
That was great, thanks, Bob. What's that? Sure.
Thanks.
Okay, next is Mark McAdams, Hybridge Road.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, I'm Mark McAdam.
So, um, I'm trying to, um, I know the funds are appropriated to fix certain roads. So I'm trying to get you guys to fix our road. And, um, it's probably the worst road in town, and I challenge you all to take a ride, and prove me wrong. But I did a little bit of research, and, um.
Wait, let me stop you real quick, we did some temporary repairs on this last year, right? Wasn't it, didn't?
No.
This wasn't this road, okay, so maybe that was Twin Hill, we just did some temp.
So I just will start with, to make it more simple. So this is the train tracks, if you're coming off sixty-eight.
Yep.
The pavement's good to here, you come up to the, the T, Underwood goes left, Morden goes right, comes down around the corner. Hybridge turns to dirt over here, so this is exactly one mile from here, where the new pavement was left off a couple of years ago, to the train tracks, and it's horrible.
Let me stop you one more time. This is the way we go home from gymnastics. This is the way we go home from gymnastics, and the girls call it the bumpy way.
Okay, so how how's your dental plan? All right, so I'm glad you know this, so I'm the last house on this, at the end of this, which is what this is. So this would be coming down Morgan, you take Hybridge, splits off here, and, uh, we counted two hundred and forty-two potholes in nineteen hundred and fifty-eight feet. And I got some pictures for you. You guys can pass them around. I'll get some of the worst ones for you here. But I guess, I guess what I'm wondering is, I I know this was scheduled to be fixed next year, and I'm wondering why we're not fixing the worst roads first? And we're fixing like Prentice Hill Road with like four houses on it? But yet we're not fixing the worst road in Hubbardston?
Yeah, so for, uh, I can, you know, just answer, so go ahead.
So, um, Mark, I told you I was gonna drive the road and I did, so I went up with, um, with our DPW director and drove up along this road to include all of what the DPW director said, all the troubled roads in town.
Yeah.
So, uh, this year for chapter ninety, it's two hundred and twenty-one thousand to do new new Westminster Road, which is a two-inch milling and a full-depth reclamation. Adams is a hundred and eighteen thousand, and Prentice is forty-five, the reason we're doing Prentice is cause it fits. It's forty-five thousand, so it fits into the year's scheme. Morgan and Hybridge Road, which you have on this map, is two hundred and forty-two thousand for full-depth reclamation.
My concern is this is never gonna fit, this road's been so bad, and the coal patch just comes and comes and comes, and it lasts for two days. And my whole thing with the dirt section that I live on is why can't they put a load of gravel in a dump truck? And bring it down to the road, dump it, and spread it with a backhoe, when they can fill all these holes in the coal patch every day, every day, every day? And then it rains, and the potholes get bigger and bigger and bigger and more and more, and now it's a a big project where if they just hit it right away in the spring, it'd be done, it'd be fixed, and the residents can take care of it, cause that's exactly what we do. Cause we take care of it, when I had my bulldozer, I did the road for two years. And we all have tractors, and we all get together, and we all go out there with York rakes, and we all fix the road, but it's out of control right now.
Have you called the DPW?
Um, I haven't yet, well, I called the DPW and I tell them.
In two years, you called us, you never called them?
I I call them and tell them that the potholes need to be filled in, and they come and they put coal patch in, and then they do nothing with the gravel.
Good way, I think, we've got a grader, I mean, they can.
So it does not need to be graded, the potholes need to be filled in, cause every time they.
Well, it's not pitched, it's gonna.
It is pitched. It's got, it's got the crown in it, the the grader comes and leaves windrows this high, the last time they graded it, the very next day, we got a monsoon. And her and I were out there with shovels, because
Nowhere to go.
the windrows, nobody shows up afterwards, and if they came with a loader and just poked a couple holes in it, the whole road was completely underwater, we were up to here in our water with shovels.
Yeah.
Cause nobody came after the grader and looked and said, oh, we probably should bring a loader down here and poke a couple holes in it, or, like I said, I mean, gravel's cheap. It would take them a couple hours to come down there and fix that road, at least for now.
Just to finish, and I've got color pictures if you want them, um the, so Travis?
Yeah.
Like, literally can't sleep at night, cause of the roads, and begs and begs for money
Yeah.
to protect chapter ninety.
That's why we're here, we want some.
And he has, um, and we get only so much chapter ninety, as you as you alluded to.
Yeah.
But the the idea behind the plan is so that there is no, well, this person jumped ahead of that person, or this person jumped ahead, so he's committed, and I've made him continue to be committed to to a plan, so in FY nineteen, the quarter that's being done is New Westminster, Adams, Prentice. Morgan is next year, and that is also very much contingent on another really horrible section, which is, uh, the strap grant up on Flag Road.
Okay, so what is the exact plan of what you're gonna do next year to Hybridge and Morgan?
So it's, I'll read it directly from Travis's plan, which is online.
And let me just stop before you do that, so we we now actually have a road management plan, there was never a road management plan in in three hundred years, right? Okay, so there is, in the last couple of years, we're just beginning to implement it, and the things that we have to juggle are, how much money we're getting definitely from chapter ninety, which is the state, how much maybe more we'll get if they allocate, and then every couple of years, this grant comes out that we're eligible for.
Right.
Small-town road assistance program, strap, so those are the things we're sort of always juggling, but this is the pa- plan you're gonna hear based on acquisition of those.
Okay, cause we could even do, i- if we didn't have two hundred and forty-one thousand, do half of it. You know, there's ju- there's transitions everywhere, I mean, you could do you know, from let's say.
Pick up from the football camp and go right right through, do the whole thing.
Uh, yeah, but if you didn't have the money, because everyone's like, well, we don't have the money, so we're gonna fix three other roads, cause we don't have the money, we're gonna fix three other roads, you know, and you hear that over and over again, I mean, there's transitions, you know? Places that you could stop, you know, anywhere, new pavement to, to, you know, so you can stop here.
It's a disaster, I agree with you. It's a disaster down there.
You could, you could go from here to here, and it's not two hundred and forty-one, and then do the other one next year or something, you know?
The safety issue is really whether.
Mark, I can't, I can't speak to the past, but what we've committed to for the future is a two hundred and forty-two thousand dollar full-depth reclamation with calcium chloride, fine grading, and three inches of HMA with a tack coat, plus twenty percent rubber application. I understood ten percent of what I just said to you.
Is that like, is that the dirt part of Hybridge as well?
Yes, so the the idea behind, the reason why you, and my education on this is is increasing, so the, uh, the reason why you don't do a piece or a piece here, a piece there is cause of cost, so when you, when you contract a paving company or someone to come in, if they have to jump their equipment around.
Yeah, but that's exactly what they're doing right now.
Well, the, this is, they're doing one area for a certain amount of time.
Yeah, no, they're doing Old Westminster, uh, Adams and Prentice, that's, New Westminster, I'm sorry, they're not moving equipment all around town.
No, it's. So I'm not justifying the road, and I'm not saying that they, what, everything you're not saying is not correct, what I'm just saying is that there is a plan, and I I couldn't have driven those roads and thought to myself, man, I wish we had another two hundred and forty-two thousand to do more.
Okay, I just have one thing to say, if Travis can't sleep at night, he needs to put some gravel in a truck, come down, fill some holes in.
I I will.
Because it's, we have the equipment, we have the manpower, we we go around and do stupid stuff like fill, you know? Coal patch day after day after day, yet my road gets worse and worse and worse.
I'll bring two coffees and we'll sit on the road and we'll all talk about it together, that's.
Sounds good.
But I'm not an expert, he's my expert, so we're gonna bring.
It's gravel, a dump truck, and a backhoe.
But we can have the conversation for sure.
But I want, I want you to reiterate the fact that 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 that's written on a plan here, so it's, this is not ten years from now, right?
No, I know, but the road hasn't been touched since last fall.
Yeah.
No one's come down there and done anything to that road since last fall.
Yeah, you know, I was talking about the paving.
Yeah, they should have seen the spring.
I don't know if you noticed or not, but I do have a petition.
I did, yeah, a lot of signatures on there.
Yeah, so, I would have had more, I was scheduled for for June, so you guys made me scramble, so I could have got more signatures, but
And just.
I'm an excavating contractor.
I can tell.
So I know what I'm talking about, Franny does as well.
So am I.
And, uh, so is he, it's not that hard to spend a couple hours down there with a load of gravel and a backhoe. And then, when they, it happens again, it's not nearly as bad, and you do it again, the next thing you know, it takes you fifteen minutes to go and fix the road.
It's less money spent than all the coal patch and all the time that they spend doing that, and it's a better result.
Yeah, yeah.
So Travis has not been in charge for long enough to have done.
No, I get it.
So he is going, he goes, he already knows a ton, but he's going to classes and he's understanding, and he's driving these roads, and I'm just, the, I know that the staff is fully engaged, and I would invite us to have a conversation, cause you're not the only one.
Yeah. I don't want them to come grade that road anymore, every time they grade the road, they just make it worse, I just want them to, the crown is there. I just want them to fill fill in the potholes.
I'm gonna take a question from back here, Vin.
I I just have a a an idea that may or may not fly, but I know that when they grind the roads, as we're gonna be doing on New Westminster and the other two, they typically dispose of those grindings with local contractors, and I know I've bought some for my own driveway, would it be possible, instead of selling them off to the local contractors to take it to?
I think, I think Travis.
But Travis?
We're getting them.
On the sixty-two project, like, we went to a meeting just to get the milling.
Sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight, sorry.
Well, I mean, that just to fill in, instead of the gravel, would the milling work?
He's not selling them, he's keeping them and redistributing them, trying to work on on parts of these roads.
Just just on mine.
You don't want them up there?
No, he does, no.
He's not redistributing on my road.
Oh, they're not?
Well, they're not yet.
Well, they're not there.
We don't even have it.
We just started to see, it was a job, yeah.
But this six hundred and eighty-two feet right here of asphalt on where the, uh this splits off from Morgan, this should be pulverized so that they could grade it, cause it, if you could actually grade that, it it just gets coal patched over and over and over and over again, there is no crown on the road here. This does need to be graded, but if they could pulverize that, then it could be worked with, right now, the the coal patch just, it just doesn't cut it anymore.
So, and I'm gonna tell you this, you're not gonna wanna hear this really, uh, even though, uh, we already told you the plan and all that, but but just just so you know overall how we have to deal with some of this stuff, is, um, so we get a certain amount of chapter ninety money, right, we can spend that, that's for, you know, the whole operation, it can even be used for equipment and stuff, right? But it's, eh, we get a certain amount of chapter, chapter ninety money, uh, that, there is a certain amount of uh, well-traveled ways that we typically have to make sure are passable, you know, by a lot of people on a daily basis. The million-dollar strap grant I referenced, the short, uh, small-town, um, road assistance program, or whatever it is, that
Rural assistance.
Well, okay, uh, that, that part of the cell job for getting that grant has, uh, uh, element of connectivity to it, so, uh things like, um, uh dead-end roads don't really have that connectivity, like, the reason Old Westminster.
Like trying to sell?
Well, well, no, see, that's just a little piece.
But that's not part of the strap.
That's just not part of the strap grant.
Like they're trying for flag because the campground's not.
Correct, to the campground for flag, and you, that's, so anyway, we we're just, there's a lot of things to juggle, I hear you, and it's, I knew that was gonna be the answer, I could have just not said anything and not had laughs from the audience, right?
Yeah. Right.
But I want to just explain to you
Yeah.
some more of of the stuff that we have to make sure is is thought about, because it's reality.
I would really like to do the coffee thing with Travis.
Okay.
Go down there and sit there, because last year, I took my bulldozer, I spent a couple days, I filled, finished the entire road, it was perfect, everyone's like, wow, this is great, the very next day, the grader came and chewed the whole thing up and left basketball-sized boulders in the middle of the road and left, nobody came back and looked and said, well, let's let's look at what the grader did, how did this come out, is there anything that we need to do, nobody came and checked, the grader drove away, and that was the last time we saw anybody, we're all rolling boulders out of the way and digging holes, you know, for the water to come out through the windrows that are this high, and he did a worse job than I did. So we went from a perfect road to thanks for whatever.
So you, I'm I'm interested to to see.
So somebody needs to go check their work when they're done.
Well, so I, and I hate to pull you in on this, but they did a pretty awesome job for you, grading the road, right?
They they did, um, cause I I definitely didn't wanna complain, cause it was way better than it was, but he's correct that the.
The windrows.
Yeah, I mean, they're huge, which means the water has no place to go but in the road.
It's, yes, like this. Yeah.
And so, um, same same sort of thing, like, we had tailings that had been packed down for all of Lovewell Pond's section, and and when the grader came, he he dug it all up. So now that part's a mess, where it was flat and it had a crown and it was smooth, now because it got dug up by the grader, so
I know, we did that.
So I just, you know, I mean, but but we appreciated so much what you did, cause we we wouldn't have been able to get the, um, stone plumbing.
Well, we we're using the proper town government mechanism right now, you're here, you've got it on the agenda, we're talking about it, there's a further meeting that's gonna be planned.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate it, yeah. We did our homework, we.
Please video that meeting.
We came with pictures, we came with a petition, Franny, was there anything you liked to add?
Or just that, yeah, I've been there for thirty years, and it, I can concur with everything Mark said, yeah, the, it is frustrating when the grader goes in, and they think they're doing a good job, and there's no, you know, supplemental piece of equipment to clean up the mess behind it, and they leave it there, we got our kids going back and forth on the road, and they're bouncing over rocks, or doing front ends, and I've been there for thirty years, and it hasn't gotten any better.
Well, I've been here for five, and this is the first time this has come up specifically for here, so this is, as all I can say is, again, I think you've done the right thing about, you know, being proactive and starting the process, and, you know, it's not gonna go away.
I appreciate it, anywhere that grader goes, there should be a loader with a couple guys behind him. Fixing, whatever, poking holes, picking up rocks, throwing them in the woods, whatever, instead of just.
Haircut.
See you later.
Gotta control the water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And the the road list is on the, uh, uh, highway website.
What's the date of that to get fixed?
In twenty twenty?
More, uh.
Start, the start of the construction season twenty twenty, so this time next year.
Yeah, is that, are those ones definitely appropriated, or is it something that is to be appropriated?
Yeah, it's back to back.
If, we do get chapter ninety money every year, um, and looking back historically, there'll be enough to do this target.
Okay.
Unless there's some great thing, and then you gotta go attack the state.
That'd be good news.
All right, thank you, everybody.
All right.
Yeah, all right, gentlemen, thank you for your time, have a good night.
Thanks, guys.
All right. You too. All right.
Should have said beer, not coffee.
Yeah, I should have.
You're up, John.
Hi.
Hi.
Me again.
Yes.
Hey. I, um pretty much ready to do what I have to do, um, I felt so that I was expecting a letter from some authority assuring me that when this was done, I had fulfilled my requirements to the special permit.
So, I, and and I remember talking to you about this, um, the person who would be writing that letter, retired. So Larry, who is our enforcement officer, anybody jump it, correct me, uh, this this, but anyway, the reason why, nothing, and so we have an interim now, looking to get a permanent position or a share, there's a few up in the air, so there's no, no one's actually, the person, there's only one person who can write that letter, and that person's no longer here.
So you understand, I mean, that was my understanding, uh, would happen, just so I at least have some assurances after I have done this. The second thing that happened, I was talking to some fence companies, and it was pointed out to me that a standard fence was not at the height that I most likely need to put in. I had asked Larry if I needed a permit for a fence, and he said no, but I'm not sure if he actually realized what I was gonna put up. So the issue at hand is, I don't wanna put something up after I get a letter, which then actually somebody from the planning board is gonna come and say, hey, guess what, rip this down.
You you needed a permit for this.
I don't need that, so therefore, uh, my suggestion, under the circumstances, would be, if somebody would write me a letter stating what they would want me to do, what height, and so forth, so they're happy, and that that would fulfill the requirements, and then I'm a good, but it was brought to my attention, I just didn't think that if I put up that kind of fence, I might be violating some fence.
Are we? Are we, yeah, Vin?
Um, I I have no problem reopening that special permit hearing, in fact, it it it's an option that we've discussed a couple of times. And we mentioned that to you, I think it was February, was it February we last talked about this?
February and March.
Snow, it's snow.
Yeah, and I have to say that the day after our meeting, I was standing waiting for, I'm the planning board, and John came in waiting for Larry. And as he's waiting for Larry, he shows me the plan that he has sketched out to comply with what we all discussed that evening, and it seemed perfectly fine to me. Uh, he was gonna do a couple of stone or concrete berms, he was gonna have a fence that was gonna be able to move back and forth, which would provide the cover and the, um
Barrier.
the barrier for the backyard. And while he was waiting for for Larry, I concurred with everything he said, it sounded like a great idea, and, you know, I had no problems with that.
Yeah.
Uh, I went there today, it's, there's no fence.
Yeah.
No, but I was also waiting for.
Hmm, he he, so, this is part of, this is the circular reference we're in
Right.
here, which is part of, part of him going and spending this significant amount of money to do what has gotta be done here, uh, he basically just wanted something from the official who would be signing off on that he complied with the special permit, that if he did what was on XYZ plan, that that final condition of the special permit would have been met, and we don't have Larry anymore. So that's sort of got a little, go ahead, Ed.
If the planning board is a special permit granting authority, um, granted Larry is the zoning enforcement officer, but if the if the request is coming off of a special permit, why wouldn't the special permit granting authority be the ones that would be responsible for saying, yes, uh uh, they're the ones that are gonna, gonna be the ones that are gonna say, yes, you know, the special permit is now complete? So why wouldn't they be the ones that would write the letter that would say, we're in charge of the special permit, this is what we require to complete the special permit? Why wouldn't that letter come from the planning board?
Can it, I mean, we thought we were under the impression that that it had to have the the review of the enforcement officer, but if it doesn't.
Yes, no, under law, the planning board has the requirements under the special permit for regulation, however, it separates under law, and code enforcement officer takes over for regulating and, uh, making sure that the discussions and conditions are all met. So we don't, we don't have the authority to do that, but we do have the authority to.
Neither neither would a building inspector know what all of the requirements of the special permit were, so that.
And right there.
Yeah, yeah, they would, he would.
They would do that.
Yeah.
He would have a vote.
He would have it, we went through the however, ten of a twelve of and and.
And and to follow that further, Ed, I wanna, I wanna say that in Larry's defense, he did a very good job following up on this. And that special permit decision, and I understand John's saying, you know, it's a costly expense. But that was issued in two thousand and five.
I don't really wanna do this again.
I don't either, but it's your job.
Okay, so what do you want, give it to me and I ain't gonna put it up.
Exactly.
He just wants this done with, so he wants some assurance that whatever.
Well, thirteen years later, I'd like to have it done with also.
Exactly, he just wants assurance that whatever you do is the right thing and it's done, I don't blame that.
So send me a letter.
So who's our, who who's the interim?
I don't want somebody to come down and say, gee, you know, guess what, I want this left, right, on the gate different, I want this, that, that, I mean, the town can say pretty much
Rich Brady's our building inspector currently.
Anything they want, I have no say, so please just tell me where you want it, how high, and and I'll do it.
Does he? Does he have any idea of the situation?
And then it's done when it's done.
I can, if he doesn't, I can bring him to speak.
Yeah.
With who's his interim?
Believe me, I'll have a backup there tomorrow morning at six thirty.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Well, that was the understanding I had that, and I saw it.
Did you not also have the understanding that you were gonna send me a letter or somebody from the town stating that if I did that, it would be done and I would just.
Yeah, I just told you why that didn't happen, we we the the legally, we didn't have the ability.
I know that. Yep.
No, it was, it was, it was Larry, so this is what we're gonna do.
Yep.
So our new interim building inspector, who this is gonna, he's gonna be like, huh?
Yeah, of course.
So, but still, well, I'm good, in fact, to personally go through it with him, with Ryan, and say, look, this is where we're at, this is, these are the conditions of the permit.
Please.
He he knew Larry very well, he could probably consult with Larry, you know, uh, off the, not necessarily off the record, but you know what I mean?
Sure.
And say, this is where we're at to it, and then we will um have him issue something.
Yes.
And I can't tell you, I can't speak for him or write for him, so I'm not gonna tell you what that's gonna be, but I can have him provide that so that you have that.
That's fine. That'd be awesome.
Okay.
And, you know, if you could come and meet up with me or whatever, we can walk the grounds.
Yep.
Fine, I just would want a letter so I can do this the way that the town is happy with it.
And once and for all have it done with, yeah.
And once and for all.
Yep.
And be done.
Ed.
And you have to understand that I really have to have it, because I can't just put up whatever.
I understand.
So procedurally, it's the zoning officer that will say, this special permit is complete and nothing further is required?
Correct, or that, not necessarily that this special permit, all of the conditions of the special permit have been met. And that that that, that's that, right?
But that doesn't.
Well, he's also required to.
Does that include somebody else coming back and saying, oh, but how about this?
I, I don't know.
Well, the code enforcement officer would would not only confirm special permit conditions were met, he would also then enforce any violations that occurred in the future as well.
Okay.
And that's just generally for the entire zoning process, whatever, whatever violation may be, the code enforcement officer is required to enforce those codes. Uh, and, you know, Ed's right, if we can open the special permit hearing again, and we have the
Excuse me.
Excuse me, we have the authority to rescind, modify, or change any special permit that we've issued.
I don't have any energy for that either, I just think that's gonna just get the process going going, so we we gotta.
I'll tell you, it's gonna, it's gonna open a huge can of worms.
Right, that's why I said, no, you know, I mean, I don't think that's the right way to to proceed.
Shit, and I would agree with you a hundred percent.
One sec. Yep.
If we weren't thirteen years into the process without performance.
I know, I know what you're feeling on this.
I I don't know what else to touch, and I and I think that the compliance is not only with the fence, there are other violations.
One sec, one sec, yeah.
And I, you know, we have a fifty-eight page report that Larry has filed, that Larry has put together, his his fines that he had incurred over up until two thousand and eleven, at that point, they were well over two hundred and fifty thousand. And today, because they still continue to accrue, it's over five hundred thousand dollars in fines.
Good.
Now, that that's an incredible number.
Where do you want me to go?
So, I know, I'm I'm, I I honestly, I I I I, we we, we came to an agreement generally that if the conditions of the special permit were met and signed off on by the legal uh party who could do that, is that we would have a special permit in compliance and we would build the fence. And if it happens beyond that, you know, is not part of that special permit anymore, so that's where we got to, and that's where I think we're still at. Meaning me, what what you sort of looked like, you didn't understand that.
Well, the other conditions don't go away.
No, 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 I didn't mean it like that, I meant uh conditions of uh a property in general, so um, I don't know, I I, yeah, go ahead.
I just, I have a curiosity question, is there no limit to, like, you get the special permit, is there no limit to you get this amount of time to get something done on the permit and then if you don't do it, it's?
I don't know.
Well, the compliance is is expected to be immediate, and the file that we have indicates that shortly after the issuance, late two thou, it was issued in July, late two thousand and five, early two thousand and six, Larry issued his first complaint. So Larry was on, and it it just continued, it was variety, I could pull the file and read them all to you.
Okay.
But, you know, it's simply a matter of lack of attention to detail, and and I don't understand it. I sat, I stood there with John, eye to eye, closest Tom and I are, he said, I'm gonna do this tomorrow, I'm gonna see Larry, I'm gonna get it done. And I I take a man at his word, but I went there today and there's no fence.
Were you not on the meeting here when we discussed that I was gonna get a letter about this matter, or did you forget that?
Well, it's irrelevant to me whether you got that letter or not.
Of course it is.
I'm saying to you that the conversation you and I had man to man, standing there in the office, you were gonna start the process the next day.
Okay, question to you, if I put up a sixty foot stone wall there and then you guys come over and say, hey, guess what, you can't put up a sixty foot stone wall, take it down, I ain't gonna go down that road. Therefore.
Alright, okay, so I I'm gonna, I'm gonna not squash this, just to squash it.
No, I just, please just squash it.
Um, but we we know, um, I I'm gonna put it back on the path or on the path that I just talked about there, which is um having the enforcement officer review the conditions, determine whether or not there is compliance with those conditions, and have him respond, yea or nay.
Can I meet with him as soon as possible?
He's gonna have to get roped into this first and and really sort of get the information, so we're gonna do that tomorrow.
Yes.
Or we'll contact him, I don't know what his hours are and all that stuff, but um, and after we pull him in compliance, we can absolutely have him, as Larry would.
Yes.
Review with you several times, yes.
Because what I'm saying is, it was brought to my attention that if I put up something that really had been suggested here, it would be way out of any building code and I would have to get a special permit for that.
Well, I.
And I don't want to do that, I have it because what I'm asking here.
See, and I'm not gonna pretend like I I know how all of this works, but there is a case to be made that if the enforcement officer approves the plan
Hmm. Yep.
that shows clearly what's gonna be on there, that that, I mean, that's approved to be installed.
That's all I want.
So, let's, go ahead, Ben.
Well, I I just wanna, I should've made this qualification first, but I just wanna say that I am not opposed to John's auto doing business. This is not a personality conflict, the first time I saw John after the two thousand and five hearing that we had with him was in February, I hadn't seen him since. I don't get involved in the enforcement, I'm very much concerned that we don't have enforcement in this town. But I never go in and say to Larry, you gotta do this, you gotta do that. Having said that, I'm not trying to say that John's way out of line, I am however, saying that we have a tremendous amount of business in this town, young, small businessmen who comply to the law, who obey the rules and regulations.
Alright, well, that's what we're trying to get to now, we're trying to fix the.
And we, you know, I just want to make sure that people understand that I'm not against business. But I I think that after thirteen years, there needs to be two questions answered. And, you know, you have the chance to do it, you know, he has his, his auto license is in your hand and the special permit is in ours. And we haven't pulled it, we haven't called him in and said, you're still doing this, you're still doing that, because there are many violations. We've relied on the system, and I, and quite frankly, I think it's just, I don't know how you're ever gonna collect a half million dollars in fines. But is it, are we gonna absolve them?
We're gonna deal with the special permit now, that's what we're gonna do, we're gonna deal with the conditions of the special permit and and sort of uh in in short order here, Ed.
Uh, does our zoning regulations uh have specifications for fences?
I I didn't hear the question, Ed.
Oh.
Do do I, I'm not upon my zoning regulations anymore, do we have fencing requirements or specifications?
No, we don't.
Putting up a fence?
So the building code, Ed, part of the building code.
Yeah, it's part of the building code, we don't.
So you you're building according to the mass building code then?
And the only requirement on this is that it's gonna be screened from the general public by attractive fences or plantings.
So it could be a a a barrier of uh, I would find you, I'm sure it's so desired. Or what do you do, what do you do, how do you get in and out of it, you have to have a date?
We have, yeah, so anyway, there's a plan, he's he's.
It's a common, it's a common thing.
We got a plan, so you had a plan, and and again, that even furthers it, is if it's part of the building code and the code enforcement officer who's the building inspector gives the approval that it was uh in compliance with the special permit, I I don't know how there's.
But no one's gonna argue with that.
Right.
Excellent, excellent, it's good.
Okay.
So the.
How, whom, can I uh call on him tomorrow, or is it too early?
We're gonna, let's let's have him introduce us first and then you.
Oh, he's that new.
No, 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 I'm kidding, but the the issue, the issue.
Okay, yeah, but honestly, you know, I need this done.
Yep, so go ahead, speak.
So the the business license for John, uh, at your last, last time we saw him, was voted to to expire on May thirtieth, and so.
Yep. The thirty first, on May thirty, yeah.
Um, his business expires in a couple of days.
Sure, we're gonna have to continue.
Have to act on that.
Yeah, I just.
Mm-hmm.
So, and so we we don't exactly know how long it's gonna take, uh, the building inspector to um, uh, get roped into it and and then the work has to get, you know, he has to review it, potentially approve it, and then it's gotta get executed, which doesn't seem to happen, won't happen instantly, so.
It'll have to be done tonight, then as far as the license.
And August.
Ninety days?
And August, probably.
I would just do a date, it was easier on the license, so in August, the end of August, August thirty first.
Oh, August. August thirty first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Seems like a.
When do you think I could meet the building inspector?
Honestly, as soon as we're done, I'm gonna run over there, cause he's over there right now and talk to him.
Okay, awesome, so maybe tomorrow, the day after?
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Ben, you, are you just holding your pen up or are you raising your hand?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The purple pose.
Okay, um.
Give you those special permit conditions if you like.
Yeah, it's.
We have that, I found you here.
Do you need a motion then?
Yeah, hold on.
Before you vote, that's section sixty-nine of Mass General Law, it's chapter one forty, chapter sixty-nine. Whoever violates any provision of this fifty seven, uh, section fifty-seven to sixty-eight inclusive, or any rule or regulation made by the registrar under sixty, unless penalty, other than recalcification of the license is prescribed, therefore everywhere is said, the section shall be punished by a fine not more than five hundred dollars or imprisonment of more than of one year or both, basically it's felony. The conviction of violation of said section rules and regulations shall be reported forthwith by the court magistrate to the registry of motor vehicles after hearing suspended or revoked, just any certificate registration in section seventy-five. So if you vote for this extension, you'd be breaking law, section one, chapter one forty, sixty-nine, and you'd be subject to a five hundred dollar fine or one year in prison.
Okay.
If you, if you take the vote knowingly, then you accept those conditions.
I mean, you.
It's, it'll happen tomorrow. That's all I have to say.
I don't know.
What what law is that in reference to? Yeah, what what, I mean, you just referenced some random thing at a board meeting.
This is not the first thing that you pulled up.
Well, you just attacked one point.
In a completely threatening manner, at a.
Oh, she didn't law, you can read it.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying dropping it on.
The last thing you brought didn't even hold.
Like, you're putting her out of business.
Well, I'm not saying anything else, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, well, that's plenty.
Well, just.
Go ahead, Ben.
Well, you know, I just heard about this also, but I think it's in reference to the license in and of itself.
I'm sure.
And and the license for class two is not, which we allow under zoning, is in question because there's possibility that he's really operating a junkyard, which is a class three license.
We've already, I I should already be in jail, because I've already voted extensions three times.
I I'm just explaining that to you.
So if I'm gonna go to jail for a hundred years instead of sixty, I guess I'm gonna go to jail for a hundred years, and you are too.
Do whatever you want.
Might be better in jail.
So, I don't know what you guys feel, but I, I mean.
Can I see it?
So we're gonna have one town board suing another town board?
No, it's nothing to express, nothing to do with, I mean, uh.
It's gotta, it's gotta right to have a business, it it sounds like you're trying to put him out of business.
Has been from day one.
You know.
Alright, I I'm not, I don't, I'm not, we're, look, we're dealing with it.
I agree with you.
And then you're talking about seeing your business and opening up a website to introduce business, you know, it's a joke.
No, no, Jan. Okay, let's let's not, let's do whatever you want, but I I don't think that's gonna be at all productive, we have a situation that was presented to us tonight.
I would just like to meet the guy, put up the fence.
Alright, we're, that's happening.
We can, we can wait until the thirty first, when it expires.
Section fifty-five.
Yeah. And we already done it three times.
You have the door.
So.
I mean, his license doesn't.
We won't be meeting again until June.
We could call a meeting.
Just call, have council look into it, and we'll.
So, yeah, you could call it a special meeting just for that if you needed to, prior to that, it doesn't expire for another ten days.
And again.
Thirty first, just checking the license.
Fourteen fifty.
Yeah, but they will be.
See, this is whoever violates any provision of section fifty-seven to sixty-eight inclusive made by the registrar, um. Yeah, we got this right now, can you have town council look at this and if we have to, call another meeting, or call another meeting.
Yeah, I just.
If you break the, you break the berm, and put the trees in the berm, they'll be even heavier.
But so Jan, we'll still get the other stuff going on in the process, um, we we have to figure out what to do about this vote thing, but um.
You'll do whatever you need to do. When I can speak to the gentleman tomorrow, the day after, I'll be all there.
Okay, so Ryan's literally gonna talk to him right now?
I think so.
Yeah. You can come to Templeton, we allow business in Templeton, that's alright.
The supervisor, he got a theater license there in two hours, this town is really, really special because of a certain amount of people
We pay a lot of money to it.
Who think they want to run the town.
Uh, let's not, let's not ad lib off of uh, uh, off of the specific topic, I I don't think that's gonna be productive at all.
That's right.
Ben.
Well, if you don't mind, I'd just make this last statement, because I really, I really take umbrage at the couple of the comments, but again, going back to two thousand and five, when John went before the Z B A for a variance, it was granted for for his business, and when he came before the special, I mean, the planning board for a special permit to do his building, it was also granted. And the only disparity in this whole thing, and I and I think, I don't think everybody's hearing this, is the town of Hubbardston has fulfilled its obligations to John's auto. John's auto is the one who is not complying with rules and regulations. I am not against business, I am running two businesses myself, and this is, this is a real offense to me that I'm trying to put anybody out of business. I simply state what is the wishes and the consensus of the town of Hubbardston, the voters approved these zoning bylaws, they gave us the power to to give out special permits, which we gladly did in two thousand and five.
One sec.
And we did not disappoint him, so we like business in town, we have no problem with it, however, I don't think it's fair to every other businessman in town that runs by the rules and that would pay a fine to have somebody get away with a half a million dollars in fines and then blame us because we're against business, we're not. I mean, there's a very distinct situation here, and I really wanna make that clear.
One sec, okay, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, you maybe forgot, when I was applying for a special permit, I had to get a bottleneck for the wetland issue, remember that?
That was part of the special conditions you had to go across the country.
Do you remember that you made me move the building forward and left and right all over the place because of that?
I didn't hear what you said, John.
Do you remember that you made me move the building way forward and way to the left for a totally different area than than I wanted to have it?
Those were conservation commission requests.
Do you remember that?
Well, we we have to follow where the law.
Do you remember that?
If we're not gonna have a a normal back and forth, then we're just gonna, we're gonna move on, we have a lot to do tonight.
Okay, okay, anyhow, okay. Okay, just a minute. Come to find out that I said that there was runoff of Route sixty-eight from the towns land into my land, which caused the subcoast wetlands. Town said, there's no runoff from anywhere into my land, took the town at face value. You must remember that too. Then when I was doing my driveway, I came up to a twelve inch culvert. I clamped it back, I stuck it into the ground, next rainstorm, five manholes on Route sixty-eight popped up because the water had nowhere to run. So all these years, now, then the 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 road commissioner, what's his name again?
The new one?
No, the old one.
Oh, that's probably Lynn.
Lynn?
Lynn, he came with an engineer, with drawings from the town, with all the culverts, and all the runoff of Route sixty-eight straight into my land. They knew it all the time, till the town lied to me, and not only that, they dumped that salt and crap water off of the highway right about twelve feet from my drinking well, do you remember that too? Talking about obligation of the town.
A different committee, John, that's conservation.
Yeah, okay, left hand, right hand.
Okay, so.
I think I should leave.
Um, yeah, okay, uh, Ra- uh, Ryan's looking into a few things with the building inspector right now, let's let him uh get through that and go ahead, Ed.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, Ben, I hear you say that you're you're pro-business, but I would have to say that in my many years in this town, that I would, I would not say, and and does, so does the recent survey say that the planning board perhaps uh is not pro-business.
Right.
But let me finish. I think that if one of the members of the planning board has a personal situation with a neighbor, I think that planning board person should recuse himself.
Yes.
Uh, for voting on issues where where there's a personal um, personal difficulty. But, um, to, that's not a pro-business move when you, when you say that the planning board, I mean, that they uh, the select board is gonna, is spending time in jail and and fined for. and, uh, and fined for, uh, for this particular issue that we bring up. Not saying the issue is wrong, but that's not how we should do business in in Hubbardston.
I wasn't.
We should be working together.
Hold on, Tom.
We should be working together, both boards, so that we can get a difficult issue resolved, move forward, and let the man do business.
Absolutely.
All right, Tom, Tom first, okay.
First first off, Ed, I have never, I on the on the planning board, I've never been involved in any conversations with anyone in the planning board about this, didn't didn't know anything about this. Uh, or anyone else in the planning board. I don't, it's never been brought before the planning board when I've been on it, okay, and I'm in a butter, so I I would automatically have to recuse myself. My point in giving the selectman that letter is because I'm trying to help them, because there is a violation of then Mass General Law, and you shouldn't be violating Mass General Law.
Oh, thanks.
So, I brought, just pointed it out, it has nothing to do with his, his existing situation or anything else, but it it, in my recog- in my reading of the law, if you vote for it, then you'd be subject to the fines and regulations of that law.
Ben?
And, um, just so I.
Oh, sorry, what he's done?
It's better to find out before you do it, than, again.
Well, we've already, as I said, we've already done it like three or four times.
And again, we've we've been here for fif- what, thirteen, fourteen years, so. I've had that, I had that at that last meeting, but I thought this would be taken care of by now, so, but it, at some point in time, you have to say.
That there.
Well, I think he's trying to work to a positive result here, and it seems like now he's just hitting more roadblocks, and I would be disgusted too if I was him.
Every single time.
I mean, let's just try to resolve this problem.
And that's true, every single time, the select board, uh, you know, authorized the license on an annual basis, they're all subject to, you know, the fine, so however many years of select board members who have just been indicted, uh.
It's not a, you're making a mountain of, you're misstating what it says, all it says is that's what the law says.
I called, I called counsel, um, it's a little expensive at night, but I believe she's gonna call me back.
Okay.
Sorry.
Ben?
No, I just, to Ed's point, you're you're absolutely correct, Ed, but this, there is no issue before the the planning board, and I do know that Tom is in a butter, and I would not allow him to participate in any proceedings, should there be any, against Mister Young.
So he does the research, and you do the, uh, speaking?
This is not the first, that's pretty insulting, Ed.
Good point.
I gotta give you a good point though.
Yeah.
All right, hey, uh, so we have, uh, that's, we're gonna have to, we're waiting back from council right now on this issue, we have a lot to get to, so I'm gonna table this discussion for right now, on this item, we may or may not be coming back to it a little bit later, out of order in the agenda, um, well, it's already been brought up, whatever. It's gonna come back up potentially based on council's review of, uh, and the specific council review is on specifically whether or not we're gonna be granting an extension tonight. So that's, that's what will, uh, our additional discussion be on, uh, if and when this does come up later on tonight, okay? Okay, um, item five.
Have to stick around.
I I, you got a few minutes? To to fester? Um, okay, uh, five, uh, Kevin Blanchett, what's your regional retirement?
Now it's one of the lighter topics, so talk about retirement. I have some handouts for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the invitation to be here, it's a pleasure to be up here tonight.
Yeah, you picked the right night.
Thank you.
I'm here at the request, really, uh, this all started with, um, um, selectman Hatad had some questions.
You wanna come up here?
You want, what's?
Yeah, yeah, come up to the bench.
I won't sit because I won't get up.
Okay.
No, you can sit, it's not, it's not comfortable, they're not, none of the benches are comfortable, you need better chairs.
All right.
That one's really bad, I feel bad for the apple bench.
Yeah, one of the slats is breaking on this one, I was afraid he was gonna come through.
It's hard.
Um, this started a couple of months ago, and, uh, we finally have the opportunity after the, um, the, that snowy march to get here, and Laurie was very.
Yeah.
Um, Ryan had made the call because, um, selectman Hatad has some questions, so I I think, I I think what I'd like to do, just take a few brief moments to talk a little bit about the retirement system.
Yeah.
And then you asked for some, some, um, some numbers comparing, uh, comparing Hubbardston to the rest of the retirement system, and we'll talk about, uh, the funding schedule, et cetera, is that?
Sounds good.
Okay, okay, and welcome, Miranda, nice to have you.
Appreciate you coming, Kevin.
Yeah.
From the, uh, from, um, I'm a little of the North Shore as well, so, from that area, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I'm in By- Byfield.
I I work in Georgetown.
Oh, do you really? Hubbard, so we're commuters.
Yeah.
So, I work in Auburn, but, um, so let me tell you about the system itself, uh, what's the regional retirement system, the Yoke County system. And it became a regional system when the county government was abolished back in nineteen ninety six, we're the last vestige of, the regional systems are the last vestige of county government. The state wanted to take over all the functions, certainly wanted to take the money, but they didn't wanna take the liability, so that's, we're there, just kinda hanging out there. We're one of the oldest retirement systems in Massachusetts, uh, the fund itself actually dates back to nineteen eleven, where we had some type of a relief fund that wasn't really a pension fund as we know it, but it paid out benefits for, uh, the widows of deceased workers, or the dependent children, or of retired or injured workers. Uh, three members of the board, one of the county commissioners, county treasurer, and the third person they chose, uh, was typically a a banker, uh, actually sat in the vault in one of the Worcester banks, and, um, they they determined what the benefit was going to be. We actually still have the ledgers from from those, um, from those determinations. The system as we know it came about in nineteen thirty seven, um, and that year was significant because it came, uh, two years after social security was written into law. When social security was written into law, if you recall your history, uh, FDR was coming out of the Great Depression, we saw a vast expansion of the federal government, um, a lot of, uh, programs were federalized, et cetera, and there was a battle going on, a constitutional battle, uh, in the country over states' rights versus federalism. Uh, a lot of what FDR was doing was being stricken down by the Supreme Court as being an infringement on states' rights, we saw the rise of Dixiecrats, uh, you know, fighting, uh, your for-state rights versus federal law. One.
This is a nice history lesson here, we have, too.
Well, this is something for your cocktail hours, um, and if you need to phone a friend, you need to phone a friend, you know, I'll be there. But, um, so, so then what happened was, when when social security was being written, the one battle that they didn't wanna fight was whether or not the federal government could impose a tax on state and local government, so what they decided to do was so often, they punted. So no public employee in America could belong to social security back in nineteen thirty five, so that's why, you know, all the critics of us just said, well, you don't even belong to social security, well, that's why. We we were never allowed to, so many of the more industrial states or the unionized states, uh, you know, like Massachusetts, uh, developed a plan that ran as a corollary to social security, and that's how our plan came about in nineteen thirty seven, okay? Um, it was not until the fifties, when Congress saw that, um, that there was gold in the hills, you know, with our plans, that they devised some type of a plebiscite, uh, a way of voting amongst the public unions or public employees to join social security, uh, we chose not to join because we had a, we had a a pretty good plan. Okay, so that's, that's how we came about.
Okay.
Um, when the plan was adopted, uh, by the legislature in nineteen thirty seven, all the cities and towns were, uh, en- enabled to, uh, enact an acceptance of of the provisions of the plan. A population over ten thousand could have their own system, populations under ten thousand, by a vote of the people at town meeting, uh, accepted the provisions of of chapter thirty two, that's our plan, uh, and, um, and became a member of the county system. So in your packet, uh, Mr. Hat had asked, you know, by what authority, you know, where do we, where do we, uh, how did they join? Well, nineteen forty seven, the town of Hubbardston voted and and actually had an election, uh, at the ballot in November, became, uh, members of the Worcester County system. So you came in ten years after we actually started, uh, the retirement system. The plan is a defined benefit plan, as opposed to a defined contribution plan, you know that defined contribution is a four oh one type of plan. Uh, ours is a defined benefit, which means that, um, so long as you, uh, earned, uh, certain credits and, uh, abide by the provisions of the plan, then you're going to have a guaranteed benefit upon retirement, okay? Defined contribution, Chuck Swab, right, you put the money in the bank, and that's gonna be your paycheck for the rest of your life, once that's gone, that's gone. Defined benefit doesn't work that way, so long as you work the requisite number of years, uh, put in the years of service, and that we call them creditable years of service, not credible, that will remain to be seen, um, uh, by the historians, but credible years of service, um, and you get to to a certain age, then there's a formula that's spelled out in state law. State law, chapter thirty two is our plan design, that's the, that's the do- plan document. You know, you you hear about labor, uh, issues, um, across the United States over the past twenty years, in the private sector with the defined benefit. Think of Stop and Shop, Verizon, uh, some of the utility companies, where they've had labor strife, it all revolved around, uh, plan changes in a very static document, a a collective bargaining agreement, we don't have that, that our plan is spelled out in state law. Any changes to the plan have to come about as a result of a change in the law, through the legislature and it's signed by the governor. That's why I refer to chapter thirty two, our plan, as a kind of a crazy patchwork quilt, a lot is woven into it, not a heck of a lot is taken out of it, okay? So, that's our plan, the, um, the, uh, as I said, you work, um, the maximum, uh, replacement ratio is gonna be eighty percent, so if you work thirty two years at age sixty five, you're gonna, uh, have a replacement of eighty percent of your final three, uh, your, I'm sorry, your highest three consecutive years, uh, of, uh, of your regular compensation, okay, it's a pretty good replacement. Average replacement for social security, thirty eight percent, okay? So, the plan was designed to retain career workers, you know, don't forget, at that time, you know, we're coming out of the Great Depression, you get on the job, you get on the town, you know, you cross the Elysian fields, and you stay, and it was meant to keep you, again, uh, the the most popular situation.
Same as the teachers, same thing as the teachers.
That's the same thing as, well, our plan is fully portable, so we're we're, we, our plan, uh, is very similar to the teachers', yeah, we, it's the same plan, chapter thirty two.
Yeah. Kevin, what raised the red flag was the, uh, um, assessment to the town.
Sure.
In, uh, two thousand fifteen, it was a hundred and fifty one thousand, in sixteen, uh, these are rough numbers, it was two hu- went up to two hundred thousand, two thousand seventeen was two hundred thousand, two thousand eighteen, two hundred and thirty eight thousand, and, uh, nineteen is two hundred and sixty three thousand, so it's o- over a hundred thousand dollar increase in about five years. That's what, you know.
Sure.
Brought this to my attention, and what would you attribute that to, the s- the stock market, uh, driving the pension fund down, or additional employees with the town?
It, well, that's, that's a great question, two things happened, uh, in 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 that period of time. One is that we transferred the the methodology of assessment, up till, up till fiscal fifteen, the system operated on a, a proportional basis, based upon payroll. So what we did is we took all the member units, now, by the way, we're up to a hundred member units, we're the largest, uh, in Massachusetts, uh, we just had the town of Athol dissolve their fund, and they joined us. So, um, you know, I like to think we're doing something, right? What we decided though, is that, uh, when we looked at the valuation and looked at the liabilities, we found out that some of the smaller towns were subsidizing some of the larger towns. Because what we would do is we would take your total payroll, every year you would have to give us a a total payroll, counting up all the, the the salaries, the regular compensation for the twenty eight people that you have on, on payroll, um, and then we would match that, and then we take, we add that all up, all the hundred units, and then we would put that against our funding schedule. And whatever proportion Hubbardston was in the, in the, uh, cumulative payroll, that was the percentage you were going to pay, okay? Strictly payroll, no experience in there, okay? So you might have had, and, no, you didn't, but you would have had a a number of towns that may have had, um, a large, um, paid professional firefighting force. They're in a different retirement group, which allows them to retire ten years earlier than than your regular employees, okay? The cost then, associated with the group four employees, police and fire especially, uh, is is much higher, almost double what it is for group one employees. Small towns don't often have those, uh, full-time paid professional firefighters, so, you know, there there was a cross subsidization.
Is group one a part-time?
I mean.
Is group one part-time employee?
No, group one would be all your general employees.
Okay.
So those who, you, we, all your town hall people, your librarians, your school custodians, your DPO folks.
Why did it take so long to to you to do this?
Well, you, well, you know what, because that that was the way it was done, it was spelled out in law, that you had to do it by that way.
Okay.
Okay, then there was a case brought by Massport in the town of Danvers, when you had, the town of Danvers was assessed, uh, on an employee who was a, well, with all due respect, was a selectman, who served many years as a selectman, uh, earning five hundred thou- I'm sorry, five hundred. I was thinking of you guys, uh, five hundred.
You don't have to think very far, huh?
Five hundred dollars, he wa- he was making five hundred dollars a stipend a year, then he gets a job at Massport, okay? At a hundred something thousand dollars.
Right.
He stayed there mysteriously for three years.
Huh.
Okay, and retire it with the, we, all the sal- all those years of five hundred dollars contributing in seven or eight percent.
In his three best years.
And then he gets his three best years.
Wow, clever.
And so what happened was, um, Massport turned around and said, well, wait a minute, he has all that service with Danvers, Danvers should be responsible for that twenty something years, at that high salary. So a case was brought, and then the court gave, uh, a little more flexibility to the state actuary, which allowed us to shift gears. So what we did then is said, we're not gonna go by the payroll method, we're gonna go by the actuarial method. So every two years, and we're engaged in this now, this number, the numbers I gave you, uh, 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 as a one one sixteen, we're engaged in actuarial valuation at these feet. So what we do is we take a snapshot of the entire system, but that involves taking a snapshot of all the member units. So we have our actuary command to look at all of your employees, your retirees, you have one disability, um, and then we look at the, at the liability, do they have any past, um, past service elsewhere? Um, what are their relative ages, um, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and and that's what we call your experience, and so we assess based upon that. So rather than your payroll, we look at the liability now, look at the liability for the whole system, and then, uh, you know, uh, divide the liability into the total, into the total liability.
And that affects our assessment.
So, so in nineteen fifty, uh, nineteen fifty, I'm not, so in in, uh, in twenty, uh, fiscal fifteen, we shifted, so that's why you saw the leap. And then two years later, we did sixteen, we did the new valuation, and with the new valuation, it wasn't so much the loss of, um, the the investments, we were, we had some pretty good years. As a matter of fact.
Seventeen percent?
Last year, seventeen point something percent, so pretty good, you know, when you think of your own saving, you know.
Yeah, no, that's a very good return.
So, so that's how we did it, that's.
And it's like two point, uh, three million in the fund, is, uh, two hundred and eighty two?
No, the fund, right, we're about seven hundred, well, we're we're at seven, about seven hundred twenty five million dollars with the fund.
Evaluation. Okay.
So, and we did seventeen last year, every two years we catch up, the past two years in the last valuation, you know, what we decided is we would cap the the increases at nine percent. So that's why you're gonna see these steady, we're paying off a mortgage, because for fifty years, the the towns, the employers weren't required to fund. So from nineteen thirty seven till nineteen eighty seven, the, uh, the system was a pay-as-you-go system. The employees were contributing five, seven, eight, nine, teachers paying eleven percent, state troopers are now paying thirteen percent, they were paying into the fund, and all we would do is pay out of the fund without the equation, you know, you need the A plus B plus, you know, plus C. A is the employee contributions, B is the employer contributions, C is the interest equals the re- the be- the benefit. Well, we were missing one of those variables, so we were using the other two, and and then it wasn't until nineteen eighty eight, fiscal eighty eight, that the towns were required to fund. So we're paying off an amortization.
That caused it to be underfunded?
So, that's the underfunded liability, so there were two components in your assessment that you don't see, this is inside baseball, um, you have what we call the normal cost, and that is the amount of money that you're appropriating every year to meet your obligations for the current year. So you have the twenty eight employees, uh, your retirees, uh, and the disability, so the normal cost is, you know, you you are kind of matched, we don't do a dollar for dollar match, but you're matched based upon the li- their liability, so you're not gonna get into a hole down the road. That, by the way, is about three and a half percent, normal cost. People will say, well, why don't we belong to social security, well, social security is six point four five percent, okay? Three point five percent for your normal cost to pay for your benefits, that would, that the person might get eighty percent when they go to retire, is a pretty good cost, okay? Any actuary in the country will tell you that, what we're paying is for the sins of the past, and that's what we call the amortization, and that is about eleven percent of payroll, okay? That's that's paying for the fifty fifty years that we weren't paying.
So what do you, what's your schedule to be fully funded, twenty forty?
Twen- uh, twenty thirty five.
So you have your, okay, this would be two thousand, so all of your five years add a schedule.
Correct. Yes, we we.
Cause it was fifty two percent underfunded.
Yep. And and, Mr. Hat, what we did is in, in twenty fifteen as well, we 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 rolled back the, uh, we were at twenty forty, we felt we were in a good position, making some headwind, then, uh, that we 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 rolled it back to twenty thirty five, so that we could be a little more aggressive in getting the system funded.
Okay.
Okay.
So what can we expect going forward for assessments?
Of paying more. No, and you're gonna see, well, you, you know, we're in the valuation now, what we did is, the board capped it, so it it used to be willy-nilly, you'd you'd get an assessment, you know, the, if the, uh, if the fund didn't perform as well, then they'd try to make it up in the next, in the next schedule, so you could see, you know, anyway, double-digit increases, you know, never sorry, decreases, but you saw the de- double-digit, you know, it was a very difficult budget, so what we've done is we adopted the policy that we're gonna go and and try to maintain a steady flow of about nine percent per year, um.
While reassessing that every once in a while.
Every two years, yeah, every two years.
Ed?
Most, most corporations moved from defined benefit plans to defined, uh, contribution plans, to protect the, the company from having, um, large adjustments, because, um, that way they'd know exactly what they had to pay in every year, and didn't worry about fluctuations in the market. and didn't worry about fluctuations in the market and that. Why is your plan a defined benefit plan?
Well, uh, it's, it's, it, well, it's set in law, first of all. And, and secondly, um, it's a defined benefit plan, and, and, and it's not gonna change because of the liabilities, okay? Even if we were to close down the plan today or tomorrow, you're gonna still have those liabilities, they don't go away.
Of your, our retirees that we have now, so we have seventeen and one that's disabled?
Correct. And, 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 and just on, on, if you look at the cost, th- this is another thing that drives the train, your disabilities, you only have one thankfully. But, if you look at the cost, that's, that's, that's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a ye- annually, you know, for the cost of a retiree, uh, for a disability, a disability retiree. But, but getting to your point, sir, it's, 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 it's just not, uh, it's just not feasible. Um, the, the public systems are not covered by ERISA. In nineteen seventy-two, Senator Williams from New Jersey, uh, you know, was the sponsor of ERISA, which required the corporate, um, uh, entities to fund their plans. Um, and they had to do it under ERISA. We weren't, none of the public plans were required to fund, okay? That's why we were able to escape it all this time, and, and, very negligently. Then, what happened in the eighties, um, that we had the, uh, the, uh, Financial Accounting Standards Board, FASB, uh, who issues accounting standards for, for private sector companies, and they required for the first time in the nineteen eighties, that corporate America would have to put on their balance sheets their unfunded liabilities, okay? At that point, only General Motors took the largest write-down in American history by doing so. What did the others do? They dissolved their defined benefit plan, and they went back to the, to, over to a defined contribution plan, thereby washing their hands of, you know, of the responsibilities, you know, to their workers, and giving it over to the, um, to the workers to self-direct.
Sure.
One of the other reasons is this, is that, I, and I think I can speak with some intelligence on it, is that I don't think the people, the public wanted to have their police and fire, or necessarily their teachers, you know, sitting in the classrooms or in the station houses, reading the Wall Street Journal every day, wondering how their markets, you know, their, their, their shares, you know, they wanted them to be committed. You know, they didn't want a guy running into a fire worried about whether he's gonna have money to pay for his, uh, if, if he got injured, to pay for his kids or his wife, and I think that's, that's part of it. It was sort of a moral issue that I think that the legislature felt. So, that's, I'll go on the answer to the question, but yeah, it was-
Uh, one last question.
Sure.
I know you said that Athol joined, but I just have to ask this question, so if the town wanted to withdraw from this, it would be a town meeting, and they would have a vote, but, like you said, we'd still have the liabilities of our existing retirees, and then we would just-
Correct.
Set up a, um, a different system.
Correct. You would, so, you would have to go, uh, Mr. Ed, through you, Mr. Chairman, you would have to go through the town meeting, uh, and then you would have to go through the state legislature with the home rule petition, okay? The way this works is you go out the way you came in, or you come in the way you went out, you know, that's what happened with the chapter. They accepted the provisions of, uh, chapter thirty-two back around the time, I think they, they were a couple of years earlier. Um, and so, they took it upon them, they had some problems, you know, up there, uh, in terms of administration and whatnot, but, um, they had a new administrator up there that felt that, you know, it might be worth exploring regionalization. And so, we did the studies and worked with them, and we, we had no skin in the game, of course, we just, we, they wanted to come, we can't. But it went through, so, so what happened in Athol, uh, it was a unanimous vote of the, or Athol Retirement Board, unanimous vote, uh, support of all the unions, uh, Finance and Warment Committee, Selectmen, unanimous vote at the town meeting.
All right.
Okay, and it went through the legislature, uh, on a voice vote.
Wow.
So, and, and, I might add, um, and this is why they're gonna retract the, uh, statute, not to me, but to, uh, Mr. Sohaski.
Oh, it's gonna be you.
To Mr. Sohaski up there, uh, is that they, in their first year, their first, um, uh, by coming into our system, their first fiscal year, they realized about three quarters of a million dollars in savings on their assessment.
Wow.
Okay, so.
Just to, the suggestion, so, early payoff for towns. So, for a small town like this, if you pay off early, you get a percentage incentive to pay off early. We don't collect, it's, it's a, it's a gamble for us, cause we don't collect enough as a small town in order to pay that full chunk to you.
Yeah.
You ever consider maybe making that a first quarter payment for us small towns, who could use the ten thousand, it says?
Well, you know, it's, it's a good question, but you know what happens is we, that's, that, then we act, we have the interest. See, the law requires payments on July first and January first, two payments. What we did, again, when we started looking at ways to help out, um, we said, if you pay us on July first, is there some flexibility? Not much more than a month, because then we start getting the interest, the funding schedule, the actuary status, we have to eat the, eat the interest. So, we're, we're, you know, we're beneficent, and we love the towns and the units, but not enough to give them free money, but-
Beneficent for me is September first.
Yeah, uh, that's, that's, I think, I, I, I couldn't do that. Uh, the other thing you might consider, though, is you're still paying off, you did two early retirements here in oh-two and oh-three, and you're still paying for them. So, that, again, if you ever got flush, that might be something to, to, and that, that rolled into the schedule. So, that's, um, that's, you know, short money, I think, but, you know, I think, I, I don't, I don't, you know, this is a heresy to say, but I don't support early retirements, um, because they, they're costly, there's no free lunch. So, um, you, and, and in this case, it's the gift that keeps on giving. You know, you, you let, to, I don't know how many people you had in the early time, both, you did a oh-two, oh-three, and you did not do an oh-ten. Only one person holds, uh, county did that. Um, like, it's the gift that keeps on giving, they're, they're out, you know, and they get five, basically five free years. And you, 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 you know, it might have been, you know, short-term, it might have been good to, to, to do the RIF instead of laying people off, et cetera, et cetera. It was, now, that's the balance, but, but you're still paying for it.
Yeah?
After town questions, I have a general question for Mr. Blake Jeter.
I'm done, I'm good.
Okay. Um, with the government retirement pensions, of course, nineteen eighty-four, the Windfall Retirement Act came in, that's not the correct word, but I can't recall the actual title. And, those of us who can collect a retirement benefit from the state, the government, cities and towns, unfortunately, don't get the full benefit of our social security contributions had we worked over forty quarters. And I know there's some type of initiative in Massachusetts to do away with that, I guess that's voluntary. Would you have any update on that?
Sure, that's a great question. Um, so, so, as a defined benefit plan, uh, any member of our system, any retiree, you're gonna get what you're, you're gonna get what you earned, okay?
What you put in.
What you put in, there's never gonna be a, uh, there's never gonna be a, a, a diminution of your benefit, okay? If you earn eighty percent, you're gonna get eighty percent, plus the cost of living that we give, you know? Um, social security had problems back in the eighties, and again, as, um, often happens, you know, when in doubt, um, uh, you know, set up a special commission. So, they set us, set up a special commission for social security, and somebody got the bright idea that there were public workers that had another job, and they were so-called double-dipping. Well, if you're paying in, that's not really double-dipping, is it?
My money.
So, yeah, so they're paying, so what they did is they put in two provisions. One is the windfall elimination, and that applies to retirees who, uh, receive a pension from a plan not covered by social security, okay? And what they do is they tweak the formula for social security with the windfall elimination. Again, um, forgive me, I have math anxiety, if they're glad they didn't have, um, MCAS in those days when I was going through. But, you know, it's, again, a three-variable formula, A plus B plus C is equal to SS, social security. The A formula tweaks, tweaks the income. So, when they see one of us, all zeros, because we're working the public sector, okay, without paying it to social security, the, the computers think that we're unemployed, or underemployed. And social security is means-tested, they, they bring you up to that so, that standard, okay, of retirement income. So, the A variable is tweaked, because they think you're unemployed. Once they find out that you're getting a pension from us, then they, they readjust that formula, and it comes down, okay? The good news is that you're never gonna get less than half of what they tell you, you know, so, which is, yeah, so you get, but, but you, again, depending upon the, um, the quarters that you have or the years of substantial earnings in social security. If you have thirty or more, you're untouched. Twenty-five and thirty, yeah, you know, between twenty and thirty, you get fewer than twenty years in social security, then you're, you're gonna get an offset that's gonna bring you maybe to the floor, yeah. Now, the other one is the government pension offset. That's the one that applies to widows, that's, uh, uh, spouses. If you're trying to, um, if you, you know, the social security, uh, your spouse can take fifty percent. And, um, and if, if you're, if the spouse is getting a, a pension from us, uh, then there's an offset of two-thirds. So, you can lose everything with social, with the government pension offset. There, there's movement afoot in the Congress to change them both. It becomes very costly, it went into effect in nineteen eighty-three, you know, and it's, I, I think it was a mistake, but to undo it is very costly. They're looking at readjusting the formula, though, to give some relief. The problem is, there are only thirteen states that are now out of social security entirely. And what color do you think they are? Okay? Blue. So, you know, we saw some movement last year, uh, with the chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, who is a Republican, cheered up with Senator, uh, Congressman Neal, who may well be the next, uh, chairman of Ways and Means, uh, if the Democrats take over. And they sponsored a bill, and for the first time since nineteen eighty-three, the bill was marked up and came out of the committee on Ways and Means. So, there was some movement, they thought that they might get a little more action.
So, it isn't a state option?
No, no, it's federal, it's, it's federal, uh, so, social security, so.
Kevin, one last benefit I forgot to mention is, uh, if someone commits fraud while in participating in this pension, that's a, uh, can you enlighten us on that?
Sure, sure. Well, uh, as you know, uh, uh, we were very helpful, um, in, in, in the regard to help you recover, uh, some monies, uh, in, you know, that kind of unfortunate experi- uh, experience. Um, what happens is, is there's a section of the law that says if you are convicted of a crime related to your job, then, uh, you won't receive, you're, you're not entitled to a, a, a pension. You can get back what you paid into the system, might, with no interest, you just get whatever you paid in, but you don't get any retirement allowance, okay? So, what happened in this case, um, almost immediately, we were, uh, contacted by the town, and, um, you, two, uh, was it, I forget the, um, the, your form.
Anita?
Anita.
Anita.
And, and said, what, what's going on, I, she heard me speak at one of, uh, meetings. And so, we immediately froze everything, and, um, uh, uh, you know, the woman in question actually had come in and, and wanted to pull the money and, and, uh, and actually retire. And, um, I said, well, we red-flagged it, said, no, uh, there's, there's some discrepancies, et cetera, et cetera. So, we held everything and froze everything in place, okay? Now, if, 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 if it had gone through, then, uh, getting the money back is a lot, much more difficult, you know? It's, uh, I'd rather burn the hands that we're doing the worst, so I, I- So, what we did is we held it, and then it took a long time, obviously, to get through the court system and whatnot. Um, and then, there was the delay in, in terms of the, the final adjudication for the, uh, the, um, um, the reimbursement, if you will, or the restitution. And then, we finally got that resolved, so, uh, and we do, and unfortunately, um, it's, um, it's, it's a protection that's in there, and I, I'm seeing it used more and more, unfortunately. Uh, we've, we've had a number of cases, this is a, so, uh, from one of your neighboring towns that's, that's been pending. Uh, she's going to trial in two weeks, but, um, we've heard that before, so. But it's, it, those are tragic situations. But at least the retirement system can play a role in, you know, uh, upholding, you know, the public, uh, public integrity and the public trust, and, and help the town recover as, insofar as possible.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming in.
Thank you for your attention, and, uh, always a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, okay, nice to meet you.
Thank you for coming out, sorry for all the risks.
Thank you very much. Jim, I appreciate it, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, okay, we'll talk to you in time, okay?
Dan, there's no guarantee that she's gonna call back, yeah? Okay, I know. So, should we have John just leave?
Yeah, so, uh, moving back down, so, Jan, we're not receiving any response from town council, so I think, uh, um, we'll, Ryan will contact you after he talks to the building inspector, and we'll figure out how to do what we talked about before as far as, uh, the review and, um, uh, comment on the special conditions. All right, thanks, we're s- sorry to make you go through that.
John, I, I have a meeting scheduled tomorrow to get him up to speed, and then, uh-
I'll, uh, invite tomorrow.
Well, I can, I'll call you to make sure it's not wasting your time, but we'll sk- I'm gonna speak with him, get him cut up to speed, see what he needs to do, then contact you about that, invite planning board or whoever to make sure that we're, uh-
Anytime is a good time.
Okay, thanks, John. All right, so, I'm gonna, I've got another half hour or so, and then, so, I'd like to, if we can, Ryan, if you can, at least, we can steer this towards items, um, that either signatures are required, or that are relevant to town meeting, um, discussion and, and, and all that stuff, so, I, I, I'd sort of give it to you to pick what order to go in, based on that information.
So, um, the election warrant definitely needs to be signed tonight, so this is for the, uh, the town election. Nothing has changed since the last time you reviewed it, and came to us from the town clerk.
Uh, we, so we, we, we voted on this already?
I know, you have not voted on the, the warrant for the election.
Okay, so, yeah.
All you've seen so far is the ballot question.
Okay. I'll make a motion to sign the town election warrant as presented.
Second motion, discussion? Tom?
Um, you were, uh, a little late, Dan, that's fine, but I brought up the issue of the, uh, uh, change to the, uh, straight acceptance. And when, uh, this review of the bylaws was initiated, I think it was publicly expressed that it was a, a review of spelling and numbering and language so that, um, it wasn't anticipated that there would be any structural change or, uh, significant change to the law, but rather, uh, reformatting and reordering and cleaning up, so to speak, and things.
Are we talking about the-
It's, Mr. Rob, this is my, this is about the election, not the bylaws yet.
This is election-
We're just moving around him, cause he has to leave.
I have to move around a little bit.
I'm on the, I'm on nine.
I, I, we're moving around.
We're on seven now, I bumped around a little bit just to get, take care of a few housekeeping items.
We'll go back, we'll go back to that.
I'm on-
We did one, two, three, four, five, and we're on seven then.
Stand, I'll stand, sign one.
Something.
Sorry.
So, I made a motion.
Yeah, okay, any further discussion, relevant discussion? Uh, on favor?
Yes.
Yes.
You have to sign all five copies.
Okay. We're just getting going.
So, the next one is agenda item eight, which is ballot question statement. So, MGL chapter three seventy allows for, um, arguments for and against any ballot questions. The ballot question, uh, that is on the warrant you're signing right now is for the library, the hundred, hundred thousand dollar capital outlay debt exclusion for the library. So, we received two, or we have one against, um, and this is in your packet, that was written by Mr. Blanchard. And then, um, one four, which is written by the Library Board of Trustees. And then, we had council write also a generic against for your consideration. So, these will be put on the town website, the warrant that went out indicated that these would be up. Pending your approval tonight, we'll put them up tomorrow. So, you need to select, um, or approve the four and the against. A couple notes to consider is, we can, or you can authorize me to work with, uh, the proponents and opponents to change, um, not necessarily the structure of the comments, but just, I'll just get a really specific example. So, in the library argument, it says the average household would increase by sixty, it's actually fifty-four. I did talk to the Library Board of Trustees about this. So, we've been making those, uh, small changes to make it as correct as possible, grammar and the like. Again, the first one is town council's against, next one is Mr. Blanchard's against. The fours were written by the, the one four was written by the Library Board of Trustees. If you don't like that one, we can, uh, council write a, a generic four. Council reviewed all of these and said all of them are acceptable, if you so choose to put them on them.
So, uh, please, as I'm sort of reading while you were reading and signing as you were speaking,
Okay.
can you just tell us what specific action is required of us? Meaning, are we choosing, are we denying, are we selecting, can you just do that one more time?
Selecting with- Selecting with discussion, um, to approve the four, or to have another one written, and then you have two against to choose from. So, um, Mr. Blanchard's is one of those, he wrote, he wrote the ag- against argument, uh, it's really not against the library per se, but it talks about the use of CPA money, uh, because it wasn't directly talking about the capital outlay. To be, to be sure, I had town council write a more generic version, uh, but they said either one is acceptable. I was just doing due diligence.
I'd be willing to withdraw mine, if that makes it easier, because, uh, mine is not whether we should be doing the roof or not, it was just a funding issue that I felt instated, that I felt that, uh, certainly we have enough monies in our CPA account that, and we have also done long, we've done long-term, about five-year borrowing on other CPA projects such that to ask the taxpayer to, uh, restore, move on a historic building falls directly inward CPA funding. And, uh, why wouldn't we go to CPA funding to do something like that before somebody gets taxed back?
Then I, and I asked council, Mr. Blanchard, to make sure that, because you, you're correct, you did write more about, we could use a different source of money than, than to do a, to do a ballot question, or to vote for that ballot question. So, they wrote a generic one that just says what would happen if you voted no, um, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, I, 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 um, I mean, we talked about this a, a bit, uh, the reasoning for this is obviously to get some other work done, on some other properties with CPA funds, with the hope, the strong hope, that we're gonna be recovering this money via grant, so, that, I mean, that's.
A hundred thousand.
Accurate, right, a hundred thousand, so that, that's, that was the, the hope, to sort of bite off, uh, a lot more on a, on a quicker basis, so.
Did we get the grant?
We don't know.
We won't know until the, the spring.
That's the thing, so.
I wasn't aware of that.
You have to fund it first, and then you apply for the grant, and then hopefully recover, so they wanna see that you were gonna fund it, and then help, sort of the idea.
Um. So, uh, I don't know what you guys think, I mean, I, I'm.
Tom has it.
Do the town council one?
Yeah, I mean, do, do, you wanna just, Ed?
Just do that one?
Yeah, you, you, do you mind, um?
No.
As far as, do you wanna formally rescind it, or do you want us to just choose, do you care?
No, I can, I can rescind it if it's easier for you people.
All right. It's not, it's not, we'll just vote on it and decide, Tom?
I just wanted to say, as comment that the CPC is contributing to the town roof.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and the reimbursement may or may not be a hundred thousand, though.
Right.
We've never said that was the reimbursement, because we don't know.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, same, okay, sounds good. All right, so, uh, I guess, let's, let, we'll, we'll do the againsts first, and then the, the four, so, somebody wanna make a motion in, in whatever fashion?
Mm-hmm. I would also just add that if you want me to, the ability to make, um, just edits in here, not substantial edits, but edits that allow us to work with the authors to, to make sure that it's accurate.
Okay.
So the only one that has two is this, right?
Yeah, so we, well, we would still have to vote to approve this, if we don't vote to approve this, we're gonna vote for council to do a generic one.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, I.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I'll make a motion to accept, um, these against statements as written, and we'll rescind the, we'll, we won't use the one from Ed Blanchard.
Okay. Uh.
Second the motion?
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll need a motion to accept the four as presented, with giving, um, town administrator some latitude for, um, some modifying, some non-structural.
To work with the author.
Work with the author, someone wanna do that?
I'll make the motion to, uh, accept, um, the four argument, the library building needing a new slate roof with, uh, within the motion, also giving the town administrator leeway to make whatever adjustments need to be made.
In working with the.
In working with the authors, yeah.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
So the, the two changes would be the fifty-four, it would be fifty-four dollars, the average household, and then calling it a capital outlay exclusion, those are the only changes to go, well-written, on four.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, we've discussed it, um, at several meetings, but the Q E M P grant through Hardwick to hire an economic development coordinator.
Yeah.
Uh, we've seen the draft IMA, there was no changes through all the towns, looking to get, uh, your vote and signature on accepting that intermunicipal agreement to hire, um, an economic development coordinator. This isn't adding a position to the town, this is using a grant, a hundred thousand dollar grant through the town of Hardwick to share an economic development coordinator for one year, and one year only.
Awesome, really is.
Um, also, unless, um, you want to vote someone else, um, suggesting that you appoint me to the hiring board for this economic development coordinator, of course, anyone in town or yourselves can also be appointed.
I'll make a motion to hire the Q E M P economic development position, and Ryan will be the hiring body.
Okay, second the motion?
Discussion, all in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
So that was only for Dan to sign?
It's Dan.
Educational municipal partnership, it's the task, it's, um, yeah, the new version of task force.
So, Ryan, we.
You do?
There's each town there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, each town, but you want all signing under here?
Just to be safe.
Ben?
Sign, sign under, Dan's on that line.
I was just gonna.
Oh, you want?
I'll, I'll send a copy of our economic development report to the regional office there.
Somebody else can sign under it.
Do the, uh, um, Montechuset Regional Commission propose for the master plan?
MRPC? Okay.
We'll send a copy of that over to them.
Okay, great, thank you.
I've talked to Ben and, and others, but the, the new economic development coordinator once hired will work with that existing plan to incorporate it into our bigger economic development picture, for sure.
Right.
Regional, not re-inventing that wheel.
Okay, we skipped over year-end line item transfers.
Did. So, the, the li- year-end line item transfer requests, so you have a copy of this?
In the back of your packet.
In the back of your packet.
That's it.
Okay. So I know you know this, but I'm just saying it for the public, the year-end line transfers, so this is expenses that either exceeded or are going to exceed their appropriation, uh, transferred from line items that didn't or underperformed their appropriation. Um, each one has to be approved by the board of selectmen and the finance committee, and voted on in a public meeting, so, the first page is all wages, so the town's, town secretary wages, the veteran's agent wages, treasurer collector salary, DPW director, and the finance clerk, um, are all transfers, twelve hundred, nine hundred, these are rough numbers, twelve hundred, nine hundred, one thousand, thirteen hundred, and then it's a switch of money to pay for the municipal clerk, which I'll explain. So those are to cover wages through the rest of the year, these are coming from, uh, general insurance, as you remember our budget discussions, general insurance was overappropriated by approximately thirty thousand dollars, so reallocating that money, the building inspector's salary, this is money saved from, uh, the retirement of Larry in the, um, not hiring someone in the interim. The, uh, animal inspector's salary was overappropriated based off the regional agreement, and then the, the clerk, so this clerk was a position change that Brian made mid-year to, um, to fund the municipal clerk who works in, uh, works for Sandy, this was a combination of the assistant town clerk, the assessing clerk, and the, uh, financial clerk. So, the, uh, the money wasn't appropriated for all of those hours, so this is to fill that gap. That's the first one.
So we need a, a motion for each of these, is that what you're saying, Ryan?
For each one, I can go through them all, or do one at a time?
Yeah, through them all, if we can just do one motion.
Okay. The, the second one is an excessors' expense, this is for, uh, CAI, their, um, the technology they use for assessing, it's three hundred and forty-nine dollars. Uh, they don't have, uh, sufficient funds in their excessor expense account to pay for this.
What account did it come from?
That comes from. I can't read the accountant's writing, MTRS. Association fees, so it's also from an assessing line. Uh, selectmen's expense, so this is transferring money from, from our dispatching services into the selectmen's account, so eleven, one thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents, this is to cover the, the very large warrant mailing we just did. Uh, it was a little over two thousand dollars, to sum that up, everyone. That's without postage. Uh, the very large transfers, so, the account name is a little deceiving, winter supplies, that is our, uh, winter or snow and ice deficit budget, uh, we talked about this in, um, in, in our conversation, so it's, right now it's negative ninety-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five, uh, we had voted to be in deficit by seventy-five thousand, and this is additional monies from that account. The, uh, as I talked about during the budget, our QRSD assessment was over by sixty-six thousand and never adjusted last year, and the insurance, the remainder of that insurance money, we're gonna use that to get rid of the snow and ice deficit and not have it go on next year, so.
That's great.
And then, lastly, a very big one, the animal control officer was underappropriated by sixty-six dollars, and Monty Tech was overappropriated by eight hundred, so we're gonna pay that sixty-six dollar fee, and Gardner's been waiting for a couple months, they've been really nice about it, so.
Okay. Okay.
Make a motion to, uh, accept the year-end line transfer request as Ryan outlined.
So.
I'll second that, discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do you want to sign all these?
Yep.
Each one has a.
I have the.
Yeah, these are the. And we will be meeting next week for, for those who love municipal government like me, with the finance committee to do the same walkthrough, so we need their approval as well.
Thanks, mate.
You know, the last, uh, well, they're all important, but the last item would really benefit from full board discussion, um, so the paperless board of selectmen meeting, so what that is, this is agenda item number twelve, so we have a little bit of money in our technology fund, um, it was underutilized by Brian a little bit this year, waiting for the permanent administrator to make some decisions on replacing computers, et cetera, I think a good use of some of this money, approximately fifteen hundred dollars or so, would be the purchase of, um, it, that, that might even be a little high, for Chromebooks for the board to go paperless, so you can see the, the shuffle we have, so the way that would work is each board member would get a Gmail account at no cost to the town, we would have a shared folder that you could access at home, and we would upload any documents we wanted you to see within the parameters of the open meeting law, um, and you would be able to access that, and all of these documents would be available to you on your Chromebook, we do have questions into whether or not you could use your own computer for this, um, but we think it's an option you can consider, it would help us save some money after paying off the initial cost for paper, and also make sure we're not losing anything, and you have access to everything.
Yeah, I think it's great. Yes, what do you guys think?
Yeah, no.
Good idea, yeah.
Everyone has a question, is that, is that available to the general public, or is that, is that, if, if you've made all that information available electronically to the selectmen, could any general person get the same information?
Not from that particular drive, if you couldn't access the, the drive at that, just like you can't access our network drive, but the information is the same information that you see here,
Right.
and everything is available to records requests, except for those protected by executive session.
And we'd put them online.
But it wouldn't be available before the meeting?
The same, we will still post the same way we do now, the only difference is we won't have a folder with packets of information.
We post an agenda.
Yeah, the agenda was.
What I speak of is all the documents, if you're, you're gonna electronificate them and make them available electronically, you could put them on the agenda as attachments, and then people could come to the public, come to the public meeting more informed, the, the public records request sometimes takes ten or more days to get a document that was here.
So, uh, that's certainly an option, we'd have to talk about the logistics and, and not everything is, a lot of things are open after this, I'm gonna discuss them, but most things are public, and you're right, they can be attached.
Consider, consider. Thank you.
So what do you want from us?
Just whether or not you wanna, I didn't wanna au- make this expenditure without a board vote.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with that.
No.
So, in no way would it cost two thousand dollars, for sure, but to be safe, I would authorize two thousand dollars to make the board paperless.
Okay. Okay, someone wanna make that?
I'll make the motion to make the board paperless.
Second motion.
With a cap of two thousand dollars.
Yeah, with a cap of two thousand.
If it comes in two thousand, I won't do it, but.
Second the motion.
Okay, uh, discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Um.
So we have, um, left wage authorizations, appointments, my report, and the bylaw change review, public discussion.
Yeah. Well, how about the open media law complaint?
Uh, we don't have anything, we c- we continue to ask, because we know it's important, and they keep telling us that they'll let us know when, when they get something, so, we're asking every week.
Have any information?
Right now, we're waiting for the AG.
Okay. Um.
The appointment is, an appointment you've already made, she's just going from a alternate to a permanent, and it's only until June.
Okay, all right, well, let's, let's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to bag out, when I have to bag out, but let's get going on the, uh, item six there, the bylaw change, changes review, public discussion, so, um, you can start us off, if you'd like.
Well, I, I'm repeating myself, I guess, for the third time, but, let me do it real quick. I understood the bylaw review committee to be formed to review numbering and spelling and punctuation.
Okay.
And no, uh, structural law change, and then, upon reading the article, uh, I find a, what I consider a pretty significant structural law change, and I, um, haven't read it in complete detail about what else is in there as structural law changes. It's gonna be a very difficult, uh, operation to have that reviewed in, in the big public meeting, and a lot of people won't understand what they're reading, but I find the specific paragraph about eliminating the, um, public's right to petition the town to have a road accepted, to be a major bylaw change, not a spelling or correction or numbering system, and it was made by a person who was not on the committee, and, um, I think it should be eliminated from consideration in this town meeting.
I don't remember when, I'm just trying, I'm just being honest with you, I don't.
I'm done.
I don't remember when it was, uh, stated that there were non-structural changes, do you, Laurie, do you, I mean?
I, Joyce discussed, I mean, I don't know where Joyce was heading.
I, I, I really don't recall, I'm not trying to say it's not true, but I don't remember that ever being some, a thing.
This is a bylaw, this wasn't from the committee, I believe this was from Travis.
Right. That was from Travis, that change.
When, when did it get put in?
But still, I agree with what you're saying, Dan.
Was it in, when Joyce came before you that time with that, was it in there then, when she came before the select board, was it three, four weeks ago?
Travis.
Two meetings ago.
Two meetings ago, the last meeting I was at, she, she presented all the changes, was it in that meeting?
It was.
Is it, I don't remember seeing it, but Joyce told me specifically there were no bylaws, there was no structural changes, you know?
Yeah, I think that's where the information came from, she said the same thing to me.
Yeah.
I went to a committee meeting.
It wasn't from you, it wasn't from you.
I went to a committee meeting, and she said that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Is, is a conflict with this, this bylaw as well as the general, and the zoning bylaws, and the zoning sixteen point eleven, uh, waiver of compliance is, is, in the, it's, in the, uh, special, uh, what do you call that? Open by, open, open bylaw, if you get the word, but anyways, the section sixteen point one-one, and the planning board acting as a special authority under the bylaw may waive, uh, strict compliance with such requirements in the sections, which are partly with, so, you may have a conflict there as well, which is gonna be.
Which one was it, art, do you know what article it was?
Sixteen point one, sixteen article, zoning, no, zoning bylaw, this is all part of the zoning bylaw.
Oh.
Just so you have a conflict with the zoning bylaw, or so, you just may have, you may have to change, if they did changes, you'd actually have to go back and change the zoning bylaw as well, so just, a conflict, so.
Yeah.
And just interestingly, it, the, the article starts off saying, just general changes to be made, table contents expanded, formatting changes, grammatical corrections, posting requirements and internal preferences, like, that's what the article starts off saying, that's what the purpose of it is, and then it goes into, you know, deleting paragraphs of.
Structural elements.
Yeah.
That's not, I don't.
And, and funny thing, that Travis would put that one.
Well, it's not maybe a crap on a person, right, it's just the process, I think it went out of bounds of the process, went out of bounds of the, uh, charter that the bylaw review committee was formed under, and the understanding by the public.
Ben?
Yeah, I know, and I, on the same question here, I'm not sure we can do it, because under chapter forty-one of Mass General Law, section eighty-one B, it defines the planning board, the powers and its duties, and a town under ten thousand people would not have a road commission, the planning board assumes those responsibilities, road commission. And then, under chapter eighty-two, section twenty-one, the authority to lay out ways, Mass General Law gives the authority to lay out ways to the selectmen of road commissioners, and I think what you, and again, that, that, in this case, would be the planning board, and I don't think we can take away a right that the general law and Mass General Legislature has given to the town through a bylaw change, or to make it more restrictive, we can't make it more liberal, and I think that, uh, two things, number one, it, it wouldn't be going along with what Mass General Law has, but I also think it disenfranchise the citizens by having them not able to make these types of. going along with what Mass General Law has, but I also think it disenfranchise the citizens by having them not able to make these types of petitions, regardless of whether it's a road or whatever it may be. And take that decision-making power away from us, the elected officials, and delegate it to somebody who is a paid employee making a decision that is not elected and is not accountable to the people. I don't have, I have a problem with that personally, I don't think we should give up our responsibilities and obligations and our duties to a non-elected official. You know, Ryan excluded, obviously, because he's got specific duties under the charter and works at your behest.
So, so what, wh- um, I just, actually, I'm sorry, but I, you know, I need to stay married. Um, but, so I'm leaving shortly, but, so Ryan, um, as far as, um, w- where we stand with this item relative to town meeting, uh, it's now just in a, uh, sort of a wide-ranging global article?
Yeah, like any other.
In, in during special town meeting.
Like any other bylaw change, it is subject to town meeting vote.
Right. So, it's subject to town meeting vote, and it's gonna be as is as it is right now with the warrant that we just signed and all that, so it's, it's an item that is brought up on the floor, uh, for potential modification of language, is the mechanism we would use if somebody wanted to strike it.
Yes, and what Vin's talking about would be, if true, would be struck by the AG, as with any other something, bylaws changes.
Right, yeah, I, I, yeah.
Well, it, as this is a public hearing on this, that I would re, I would ask that, uh, in light of these situations, the select board recommend that it not be approved, which means it would be obviously up for a vote, but as we do when we hold public hearings, we report to the, to the town meeting on each and every, uh, item that comes before
Yeah.
the, the public hearing, and I would request that, you know, your report signify that it was not, no we spoke in favor of it, it was, uh,
No, recommended.
Yeah, very good, thank you. I gave my birds wing tonight, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not really in favor, but, so.
But.
Can I, can I just ask a question?
I, I gotta go, sorry.
Because, right, 'cause all these things are under, um, one article, and everybody votes on the one article, everything that's in the article is therefore passed as the vote, that's how it works?
If it's passed that way, yes.
So that's definitely a problem, because.
But it could be amended on the floor.
It can be amended, like any other.
Okay. And who would do that? Like, who does that amendment?
Town meeting.
Any person, any member of the.
Any one.
You or I, or anybody here.
Stand up to the mic and present it.
I'm not gonna wanna keep hearing from me.
Not true, you're doing a very good job.
It's part, it's part of the democratic process, so town meeting is, um, the ultimate authority in, in town, not to be jordled, but it, they're the authorities, so if they decide to amend an article and vote to do so, to include the budget, it's, it's allowed. So it, it's not just a blanket slate vote. We encourage everyone, I'm gonna look at the camera, even though I don't know where it is, to review these changes, these bylaws, to become informed, um, 'cause there are a lot of bylaw changes, and, um, just went through it in my own town meeting, and it's difficult.
So to the point of this one, um, basically Vin was suggesting that we as a board make a, a statement saying that we're not in support of this? Can that, would that be stated at the town meeting at the time that they were going over it, and that would be sufficient?
It, yes, you're on the, of course you can do that.
Typically, they go first.
That statement, yes, would be, to bring it to the point, and then a motion would be made to amend it, right.
Mm-hmm, and that's.
Mm-hmm. Can you give the specific reference to what we're talking about?
Do we need a motion to do that, or can we just?
They're just town meeting floor, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so in other words, we're, we don't need a motion here, we'll just wait for the town meeting at.
Well, what we do, and, and this is only.
Well, we'll go through, I believe, and either recommend or not recommend certain articles, so at that point, we would vote to not recommend that.
Travis could amend it from the floor.
Yes.
What we do, Jeff, and this is just the way we do it, because we hold probably ten times more public hearings than you guys, but when we listed the testimony, if there's a statement in for education, we indicate that, and our report, if there's a statement against it, we indicate that.
Mm-hmm.
And based on the support or opposition, we make a recommendation to the town meeting to adopt or not to adopt.
Oh, not, okay.
So what I'm asking you is to recommend not adoption of that particular section, because.
At the time that that comes up, okay, all right.
Right.
So the actual, just so you're, we're all on the same page, so this is twenty-three of the general bylaw review change. So it reads, uh, chapter eighteen former chapter sixteen, Streets and Sidewalk, section two point one, delete last paragraph that reads, notwithstanding the above, the town meeting may accept as a public way, a way that does not meet all the conditions set forth upon a recommendation by majority vote from the planning board to waive such conditions.
Ed?
I'm, I'm not, uh, I don't know all the chapter of the law, but I think the, the reason this probably came up is that, you know, um, there is a process without, uh, citizen petition to be able to present a road to, to the town, through the select board or the planning board. What, what this, I think, is trying to attempt to do, I live on a private road, so I get thirty signatures, and you guys have to put it on a warrant. So I get seventy of my friends, if I had that many, but I don't, to show up to a, a town meeting, and therefore, they could vote that that would become a public road, and the other, I don't know, forty, I don't know how many other voters we have now, maybe twenty-seven hundred. Um, you know, I mean, it's their fault they don't show up at a meeting, but to have, um, maybe at some point in time, we should look at how many signatures it takes to put on a citizen petition. Not that that's not a good way to do things, but to have a road, to have, you know, anybody be able to get thirty signatures and put up, put up a private road for the town to support in the future, doesn't make good sense for the town, probably.
Perhaps Ed doesn't understand the general way that the town works. Anyone could put in, uh, an article on the town warrant, the ten signatures or a hundred signatures for a special town meeting. But it's up to the people that go to the town meeting to vote, it's not anyone else. It's, even this whole thing, the street row, it's up to the people of the town to vote for it, and the planning board, when we voted to give that waiver, was, we were, we were just saying, let's let the people of the town make the decision, not us.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we have the ability to do through this waiver.
Um, I think I've been around long enough to understand that process.
Yeah, I know.
Um, Vin?
Well, I was just, I was just looking to that, it's actually a state law, but.
Well, just, just as a point that.
Well, excuse me, excuse me, uh, Vin?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, the petition can't really go directly to the town meeting, it has to come to either you or the planning board, and the planning board, in this case, has to make a waiver if the reward, if the reward, if the road, I'm sorry, does not meet the standards. So if the, the planning board does not wanna vote for that waiver, it won't. But, you know, it's, again, it's part of the process, and if it doesn't vote for the waiver, then it doesn't go to town meeting.
It stops right there.
Yeah, so it's just, it's just part of the process that I think should not be eliminated, because it gives everybody that is elected a say in the.
So if somebody makes a citizen petition and you don't approve the waiver, it doesn't make the town meeting?
Correct, yeah.
Or they can bring it up to the standards.
But the, no, but the waiver, the waiver is for the conditions of the road, the specific condition of.
But it still could make, it has to make town meeting, 'cause it's a citizen petition.
Yeah.
You can say, you can say.
Yeah, it would, it would go back without the waiver request being granted.
Okay.
I'm sorry, okay?
Thanks.
Tom? Uh, like I say, I, uh, got this document, and, uh, what other, because you people are much more familiar with than me, what other parts of this document make structural changes, as opposed to what the mission of the committee was?
I think there was some debate, uh, that Dan was alluding to, we can't remember, that that was specifically the mission, as you stated it, that they couldn't do anything else.
It's in the art. The mission is stated in the art.
Joyce came here and went through all the changes with us.
She didn't mention that one.
Well, my question is, are there other changes that are structural bylaw changes, as opposed to punctuation, numbering, and spelling?
I don't recall, and if it may be.
I think I see one, but maybe this was voted on in the past, and I don't know how it got changed, but the, um, authorized revolving funds, that's all part of this bylaw? Aren't I, am I correct? And it would be.
No, I don't think so.
No, it's a different one.
Oh, it's a different one, it's a different article, yeah.
It's a different article, yeah.
So it's accepting a new version of the master of the law, that, uh, to shorten it up, and please don't hold me to it, but you, you no longer would have to publish the chart, just the names of the revolving funds that you're appropriating. It's a modernization article.
Okay, but there is one authorization by that was changed from the Mark Transportation Management Fund
Uh, we have one, we have.
for, for many, many years, I think, one, two, three, four, five, six, maybe, it was, um, administered by the Council on Aging. And then how did it get changed? This was just a, a, um, administrative thing, or is this something that had to be voted on by the town?
So any changes to revolving funds, and I would have to look at the specific vote, would have to be made by a town meeting vote?
It would have to be made by town meeting vote. So, I don't remember voting on this, but.
I'd have to look at two thousand seventeen, I don't remember.
Yeah, because the Mark ban was taken from the Council on Aging Administration. Was that voted on at the town? Do you know, Mr. Emilio Williams?
I don't, I don't know.
I remember discussing it here, and I remember the reason that it was, uh, taken, but, uh.
I don't recall.
Oh, if we had, no, I couldn't.
Have to look it up.
Okay.
Isn't that, that's different from past years, just go back and compare.
So one other question that I had is on the same page threes, is on number nineteen, which talks about, um, annual reporting by different, um, committees. It is completely, the paragraph is completely struck, so I just wondered, so is there not gonna be any accounting?
Well, they, I think we discussed that for a little while, too.
Okay.
There's hardly any committees report, and I think Joyce was saying it's kinda hard to call somebody out who's not prepar-, I mean, granted, there probably should be something said, but there really isn't, ha, there really has not been anything reported at prior town meetings. So we were like, are we gonna call somebody else that's volunteering their time on some committee to do a report that they're not even prepared for? And that's why we, we struck that.
No, this is not, this is not reports coming.
So this doesn't involve money?
No.
No, 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 no.
No.
And to report for what then? Like, what they did?
It was under the town report.
Different, you know.
Yeah.
It's the annual report.
Doctor Stoddard stands up, for example, at the beginning of the meeting, and gives you an, an overview of what we, we as a town have done in the last year,
Huh? Yes.
And it's similar, in that sense.
We have a one from last year up here, it's green, one when you leave, you can see what it is.
When's the new one coming up?
It should be ready for town meeting. That's when it's supposed to be ready for.
But aren't there some committees that really should be reporting, and what?
All of them do. It's the little ones, like this year Katie wrote a special events, it's very few that don't, um, you know, it's, it's, the accounting, all of them do. Um, you know, but there are so many different boards and committees, and there are some that are not full, that don't have members, and that's what I was wondering.
It's like the cable committee, the finance committee.
Yeah, the cable advisory committee, they don't.
So I guess I'm just curious, like, why strike it at all? Like, if, if it's not an issue, why strike it?
Uh, open.
But those who should be reporting, they no longer have to report, so I don't understand why you would strike it.
Excuse me.
It, it's like, you know what I mean, like, it's that hard, so I just don't understand.
Yeah. I think we went back and forth, on us.
Yeah, I figure what Joyce's reasoning was, it's like, they just, I don't know, I don't remember.
So I think if it was left in there, you have to call them out on it, or something, I, I mean.
Yeah, if I recall correctly, what that statement that struck out says is that if they don't report, then they automatically are forced to resign.
Oh.
And we did not want to punish volunteers who had come forward, served on a committee,
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right, Tom.
And then at the end of the year, you say, sorry, you can't do this anymore, you're forced to resign. And the, the resignation part was the problem, and it, and it's.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. It doesn't say that in this paragraph, but maybe it does other parts of it, you know?
I take it, no.
So the rev-, I'm sorry, the revolving account, so, a- at the end of article six of the annual town meeting in two thousand seventeen,
Hmm.
Certain bylaws.
Um, so any amendments or changes are bold, italicized, are struck through, and the, the change was made in last annual town meeting to
So it was made at the.
Executive administration.
So.
So anytime that article comes up, if there's any changes, they're called out on the warrant, and then that vote would then bind on.
Something like we should have.
It can, or amended on town meeting floor, and it's all open.
Yes. Uh-huh. Okay.
Okay, uh, can we put to rest the discussion on the bylaw changes at this particular point in time? Uh, I think some of the questions that you would have, would, would, might probably would come up at town meeting anyway, and the members of that committee, uh, be it Joyce, et cetera, would be able to answer, you know, give you a better explanation of why they did what they did. But we still have a few other things we need to get to.
Yeah, I think. Through all these changes, I, that's what, the whole concern was, is this is gonna take a long time to go through, you know?
A long time, because, you know, this is, people don't understand this.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and so then they read that, and they're like, why, why? And so then it becomes this crazy.
It's gonna be a question after question.
Her explanations are, are posted online on YouTube for that, was it the last meeting? Or the meeting we?
I think it was the two.
Every single.
Did they hold a hearing?
We went through this, yes, and it's on, uh, YouTube, so you get your, you know, any.
Okay.
I remember three meetings, you know?
We did that.
Just to, to address a comment, so we went back and forth several times, and with counsel on the best way to present, so by charter, it's required every five years that you review the bylaw.
Right.
So how it's presented was a, a matter of discussion, um, the, the other, another way to do it would be to print the entire bylaw with strikes, it was in bolds, but the, it was deemed that that would be fiscally irresponsible to the town.
Hmm.
Yeah, great.
It would be thousands of dollars. Uh, so how do we get the public to be fully informed about the bylaw change, will still satisfy the charter, is a question that has kept me up, I know for sure, so we're, we're gonna make, um, bylaws available, I'm willing to, to walk through with residents any of the bylaw changes, as, as are so are the boards, um, because we do, like you said, wanna make sure that people understand, they're not.
That's why people don't come to vote in town meetings now, 'cause they look at this and they go, oh my gosh, I can't even read this, they can't even go vote on it.
Yeah.
I don't understand, I was so excited to go to my town meeting that.
People should be.
I don't get it.
I was at a baseball game, mine's on Saturday morning.
I agree with you.
I'd go twice.
Uh, Tom?
One last comment.
And let's, we gotta move on.
To your article, to your, uh,
Not my article.
Your, your, to your concern, to your concern, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
None of them are my articles.
Um, on the website, on the town website, is both the document that you're looking at tonight that we find confusing, but there's also a document right below it, I think, that, that is exactly as you said, the big seventy-four page document that has the old language struck out and the new ra- language in. And if that were used as the slideshow, people would have the context of the change. And if that was scrolled through, even quickly, it would, it would be more informative than just looking at the article document. That doesn't have the context. That's a suggestion.
It is. I, I don't know if it's physically possible, but it is. To be able to see it.
It's true, and to be, be able to hear in that building is very difficult.
That's true.
Yeah.
Very difficult.
Yep.
That's what we need to put on the next year's budget, is a sound system.
A decent, a decent sound system, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and we need to turn the, and if people speak to an issue, their back is to the audience, and it's really, I always felt rude to the audience.
We need to.
Yeah, for all.
If that microphone could be put up front somewhere, and then the person speaking could be speaking, look, like, kinda looking at the moderator, but also addressing the audience, it'd be a lot more effective communication.
Vin, last one, go ahead.
I just wanna know if you want any comments on the scenic road bylaw? It's one of the ones that went from, it's in the general bylaws, so if you want a comment on it, fine, not.
I think we went through it, didn't we?
Yeah. I just think it's very restrictive, and, um, where we already have the, uh, DPW director issuing driveway permits, a lot of, you know, these stone wall breaks or anything can be addressed through him.
Well, that, that's true now that Travis is on the job. It's never been addressed, he's called me several times about situations that have happened after the fact. But when I looked at it, it, we have a whole host of roads already on the scenic road list, and people said, how'd they get there? They, Mass General Law proposes the scenic road, and what this bylaw does is define the process, the procedure, the criterion for it, and why and who should be enforcing it, and who shouldn't be enforcing it. And it also, it also gives the ability for some, I think we have three or four agents to enforce it. Right now, we have absolutely no enforcement.
Well, like I said, the DPW would issue a driveway permit, or say you're doing a septic repair, the water help would be issuing a permit, and upon site visit, if there's damage to a wall, that's the, uh.
If, if they catch it, but there's no consequences.
And then when they go to sign off, you go to the property, uh, you've got some damage here that needs to be corrected.
Correct, but there's no consequences to that.
There's all the, uh, to the front.
And the, and the opportunity for scenic bylaw, which is so the neighbors on that road, now, understand that the people who nominated their roads and had their roads voted on as scenic. were people who went to town meeting for that purpose, they would then have the opportunity through a public hearing to give their input, whether pro or con, whether or not that, that stone wall or that tree or whatever should be violated, and whether or not it should be put back in place, or, you know, and that's the whole intent of all of this, is to put more teeth into it and also give people the information on how they may want to put their road on the scenic road list,
I mean, authorization to have, just this one, and one appointment.
or take their road off the scenic road list. So, it, uh, it got complicated, I agree, but I, I didn't know how else to, to present it, you know, one of those things.
Okay, um, let's move, uh, I wanna do the town administrator report first.
Sure. So, uh, Memorial Day activities, so town employees and volunteers have been working really hard on this, uh, particularly our COA director Claudia, and our, our new VSO Jared, and cemetery commissioner Paul Sweeney has been helping with the Boy Scouts, make sure the flag's ready, that's gonna be up tomorrow. Uh, we took a team field trip up to the town common today to, to put out flags and to, to clean things up. So just wanted to invite the public to Memorial Day, uh, Memorial Day is the day we honor our war dead and fallen, um, I will be in the parade wearing this, and this. So all veterans are gonna get a hat and a T-shirt from the Memorial Day Parade Committee, so we encourage all of our veterans to, uh, to come out
Nice. Oh, nice.
and, uh, show, show the civilians how to do Memorial Day, how to honor the, the day. So the parade will kick off at two, um, march down, and many of you know this, but for the public, we'll march down to the, uh, town common, and there'll be a speaking program there, followed by an ice cream social hosted by the, the council on aging. For veterans who can't walk, um, there will be transportation given, open air transportation, and, uh, it never rains on Memorial Day, so we're good to go.
And then where are they lining up, at the field?
Uh, at Curtis Rec Field, so I, I know there's a movement in place, if people park here for the social, they can be driven up, if they get here early enough, so one o'clock.
Field, yep.
Navy vets have to wear an army hat?
No.
She has one for everyone, and also for women who have somebody, you know, as well.
I tried to wear the marine one, so I would be. What's that? It's got a big plane on it, and it flies around.
Wings.
Really comfortable.
We didn't have the date when it came out, and when, we only have limited room on that, and we wanted-
So, um, so town meeting preps, just a couple of questions for you, um, obviously these warrants were mailed, people have received them, which is good, uh, this is June fifth, will be our, uh, annual town meeting and special town meeting starting at six thirty. We've reserved the center school for June sixth and June twelfth, just in case, um, it spills into two days, just to be proactive. I also spoke with the moderator and town council to make sure that we're prepped and ready to go for the meeting, uh, just a couple of questions I have for you. The organi, something to consider, and, and this is not something you have to answer tonight, but, um, we're gonna have an organizational meeting the night before on Monday, that's still available to us, and in your regular meeting schedule, if you'd like to present a state of the town, which I heard is normally done.
Dr. Stoddard usually does that, yes.
And, uh, just let us know, uh, what you need help preparing, if there's any additional information you'd like us to push out to the public, and if there's any experts you'd like us to invite to help facilitate conversation. Just items to consider. Ed Leonard, I should know that. So we've spoken a couple of times.
Excuse me, um, I just got a letter yesterday or the day before inviting myself and other candidates to a candidate night on June sixth. I don't know if you wanna let them, the council and agent be aware that you might have a contingency meeting, so that if they wanna change their meeting, if you have to go on the sixth, they're gonna have a conflict, and if most of the candidates go to the town meeting, I don't know if they would, wanna change their date or?
That's why we pick two nights, so.
I realize that, but I don't, are they aware that the sixth is also being reserved for town meetings, or something?
Yes.
Okay.
If not, I'll make sure.
Okay.
You haven't responded to your letter yet, though, are you committing to candidate tonight?
I haven't responded yet.
No.
When do I have to respond?
Because we need everyone to come and state their public opinion, participate in democracy.
Well, if I can't go to town meeting, I'd rather go there.
You're gonna be the first one.
Any place that I could talk, I'd be happy to go.
I, I-
That's why our meetings last till, till eleven thirty.
Yeah, I'm teasing Vin, but in all, in all honesty, even if you're running unopposed, we'd like you to come and, and participate and, and tell the public why you're running. It's, it's admirable that people do run, and we'd love to hear why they wanna do so. Uh, so, moving on with my report, employee vacancies, we hired Peter Howard Junior, which is the, um, wage authorization that you have tonight, as our recycling center assistant, it's our last non-seasonal vacancy, we still have, um, cemetery help that we need. Uh, this was a big effort for us this spring to fill our staff, uh, we feel really good about the staff we have in place and are, are looking forward to FY nineteen, uh, with the crew we have. Union negotiations, I spent most of my day writing contracts, uh, those should, should be done in time for the end of the fiscal year, I'll continue to update on that process. Uh, those important dates, June fifth, special annual town meeting, June sixth, candidate's night, which Vin has committed to, and June twelfth, uh, is our annual town election. Upcoming discussion points, these are, again, for your consideration, uh, after town meeting, for sure. So once we're completed with the budget season and completed with town meeting, a few conversation topics, I just wanted to give you a heads up to prep you, so that we can have, um, strong conversations about it. Uh, we've given you a draft selectmen's meeting schedule, so, uh, look at that, de-conflict, uh, decide how many me, meetings that you wanna hold, not hold, et cetera. We're giving you that ahead of time. Wanna do a session budget and warrant process lessons learned, so what was helpful, what wasn't, how can we improve the process for next year, I'd like to write all that down, so we don't forget. Building department values, we sat, had a pretty significant discussion tonight about zoning enforcement, uh, we're in s, in several conversations with many different towns and many different options in terms of how we're going to structure our building department, so I'd, I'd love to have some input as to what we value as a community, and how, uh, we wanna move forward with the building department. And then, uh, office space utilization, so we ran into, with hiring some new employees, we continue to have some space issues, and it's, it's worth, although it can be difficult, conversations, talking about, how we envision space moving forward in, in the community, uh, for all town offices. Lastly, so those are just conversations that are upcoming, obviously, it's more than, hey, what do you think about this, so I didn't wanna surprise you, so I'm hoping to have those conversations, uh, through the chair. Employee recognition, so this week I'd like to highlight the joint efforts of our fire, police, and DPW to restore the town common flag, so, believe it or not, bylaw changes were not our most common complaint, it was where is our flag? So the flag, uh, was noticed by many people, it was down, which I'm very proud that people noticed it was down, at least they're paying attention to our flag. Uh, it was the result of a frayed rope and terrible winter weather, uh, because of the weather, we couldn't put it back up, the ground was too soft, or the access was, was not there, or it was too dangerous for our public safety officials. So, once that changed, um, first, our police department rescued the flag and stored it, it was right over there, I walk by it every day. The DPW purchased a new rope and on two occasions attempted to put the flag back, uh, the, the bucket truck we had didn't reach all the way up there, and, but they tried really hard for a couple hours to get it back up, and the, the land was too soft, so once, once the, the ground hardened up a little bit, we had bear fire department come and help our fire department with the ladder truck put it back up. So you'll notice it's up for Memorial Day with a new sturdy rope, and hopefully it stays up, just like to call out how many different people helped to make that happen. It's an often underappreciated part of municipal government, getting flags up and down and getting them, uh, to look the way they should.
Okay, thank you. Uh, wage authorizations.
In the back of the packet you have, um, Peter Howard Junior, so new recycling assistant.
Do we have to waive the notification period?
No, in here, in the-
The other one.
In here.
Yeah, I was about to ask that.
It's a separate pack.
Do we have to waive the, uh, notification period?
Yes.
Yeah, she loves it, I gave it to her, I don't know why.
And if you notice his wage reflects our effort to make sure all town employees make the Massachusetts minimum wage.
Okay.
Take a motion to waive the notification period for Peter Howard Junior for Board of Health, he's the recycling center assistant.
I got it. So second, okay, motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, appointment?
Yep, this is Sarah Lyon, it's gonna be through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, she's just actually going from an alternate to an, a member.
So-
Cultural council.
Yes, cultural council.
So we need a motion for that?
I make, make a motion to appoint Sarah Lyon to cultural council.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, committee, why don't we, uh, table that, 'cause Dan usually handles that? Do we, minutes to approve?
No, not in your packet, no.
None? Okay, uh, any old business?
I, oh, I had a question, um, Ryan, I was down at Greenwood Cemetery with my daughter, was doing a project for school, and, um, I noticed there was a grave that was, you know, toppled, looked like it'd been like that for years, and does that money to repair those things come from the cemetery, uh, commission fund? Or does DPW, DPW does maintenance, like mowing and cutting, but like for, like the gate needs some work, like there's a nice wrought iron, uh, entrance, that's starting to lean over and some damaged, uh, wrought iron fencing.
Is that done at Cunningham, near Cunningham Park?
Yeah, it's like set back in the woods, and, uh, I just wondering if, I, I know that they have the monies, the cemetery commission, but would that money come from them for those repairs, or DPW?
So the, it's, not to be coy, but it's both, um, so perpetual care is something that can be used for cemeteries, but they also have ongoing maintenance costs and promise, promises to the families of, of, of the fallen, um, sometimes these are handled by, by town meeting warrants or, or free cash to come up with a plan for restoration, uh, and sometimes it's private donation, so, um, if you wanna email me those things, I can go look at them, and we can talk about, you know, the best way to tackle that and other problems.
Okay. Any other old business? Yes?
I just have one question, um, maybe six months, eight months ago, you were going to head up a charter review committee, and I was wondering where that stands, um, what happened with that, I think you were, you personally were given the-
Well, we talked about it, but, uh, nothing e- ever came of it.
Nothing came of it?
No.
Nope, okay, just wondering where it stood.
Any other old business? And we'll press, okay, and we'll take motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second motion.
Nine thirteen, maybe adjourn.
Okay, yes.